Welcome. This is our third budget work session. And this is actually the one that was canceled from March 7th and rescheduled for today. The time is 6:35, and it is Thursday, March 15th. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have two or three things on the agenda for tonight. We're going to be going through Accounts 1005, Human Services, to Account 1810, and then contingency, including employment benefits, debt service, and the capital improvement plan. And then, the third thing, we're going to be moving on, the third thing, number three on the agenda, is Account 0810, this is the police, to Account 0880, Emergency Medical Services. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Alfred. It's going to be exciting to hear from all the Human Services tonight, and we will ask that you be brief, but to the point, and we welcome, you know, hearing from all of you tonight. So, thank you, Mr. Alfred.
Okay, anybody over five minutes loses 5% per minute thereafter. Is that what your suggestion was? I don't think we'll have to be that strict, but the first agency, we have, we have 12 agencies that provide necessary services to town residents that the town provides contributions to on a yearly basis. For the 1213 year, we're recommending level funding to what was provided in the 1112 year, which over the 12 agencies will amount to $145,400. The list of agencies is presented on page N35 of the narrative, and it's also, the detailed numbers is on GF19. So, in starting, the first agency was South Shore Center. South Shore Center has requested $15,000, which is the same level of support that they had received in the current year. Is there a representative from the center, South Shore Center? If not, we can move on. I think most of the agencies, what we found in terms of the applications this year, and really, there's little exception, is that the funding from South Kingston is being used to pay down uncompensated services that are provided by the agency and the services that they provide. These would be for either uninsured persons or underinsured persons that receive services from most of the agencies. The second agency on our list is the Home and Hospice Care of Rhode Island. Is there anyone here from hospice? If not, hospice had requested $1,500 contribution. We had proposed that they receive the same level at the $1,500. I think council is certainly well familiar with the services that this agency provides on a statewide basis. Their program is open to all residents within the state of Rhode Island, and we are one of the few communities that do provide funding support for the agency. They do note that their unfunded patient care services amounted to over $464,000 in the 2011 year. Next agency is VNS, Home Health Services. I don't think we have any agency representative there. The request from VNS was continued funding at the $24,000 level.
Here?
Be fine.
Hi. Yes, it is. Thanks for having us tonight. Just a very quick update under five minutes, under one minute. Oh, Mary Lou Rhodes. Thanks. Since we filled out this application, we have been confirmed of a 5% cut in all Medicare funding as of January 1st, and then a couple of weeks ago, just received notice from the state that we're going to be cut 25% across the board for Medicaid funding for certain programs. The one we're most concerned with is our family outreach. It's called now its First Connections Program, which serves the high-risk families of newborns. So, I can't tell you how happy we are to know that we're going to receive level funding from this town because we have a high number of folks from families that need us here. So, thank you, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
We're seeing that Medicare cutback, particularly in the school department. We, as a municipality, are losing about $200,000 from what we'd seen in prior years as far as the reimbursement for noneducational services that we provide. So, we certainly sympathize with the problem that each of the agencies are running into.
Yeah, we're all trying to be more efficient, and I respect how you're doing it, but it's a challenge.
Thank you. Any questions here at the table for Mary?
Thank you.
Jim?
Yeah, what Mary, what was that amount to in terms of dollars, that 5% cut? In terms of dollars?
About 200, no, let's see, no, it's about half a million for Medicare.
Yeah.
Yes. And the 25% from the state is about, the total is about $50,000, $60,000 maybe.
Yikes.
Yeah. Yikes from everyone.
If we're going to reduce the federal deficit, we're going to reduce the social service programs.
Wait.
If we're going to reduce the state budget, we're going to reduce the social service program. So, it's a continuing, it's a continuing theme.
Is your flow-through all fed to state money, so it's really at the Fed cut? Is this total dollar amount, or some of this is out of our state?
Some is out of the state. The Medicare is all federal, the other, Medicaid is the state cuts.
Thank you. Polly, and then Kathy? Is that what the sequence is? If not, correct me if I'm wrong.
Mary Lou, how do you plan to make up for those cuts?
Well, it's all internal. It's just cutting costs inside the agency. So far, we've been true to our mission and served everyone regardless of ability to pay, but we're using the lean techniques and just looking at internal operational efficiencies. No raises, you know, in a couple of years and probably again, so, you know, you do what you have to do, but it's getting, as you know, to the point where there's not a whole lot left.
Kathy?
Mary Lou, how many, for South County, Southern Rhode Island areas, patients, would you say you serve a year, and do you have the Rhode Island numbers of how many patients you service a year? Medicare or the older patients, I should say, let me qualify that.
Medicare, probably about 2,000 in our service area, and over 3,000 total, and that includes all the families. We have young families too. They're not all Medicare.
Okay. Just in there, and that's for the Southern Rhode Island area or the state?
Just Southern Rhode Island.
And do you know what the state is off the top of your head?
I can get that data for you.
No, that's all right.
But I don't know. It's probably about, it's probably about five times that.
Five times that.
Maybe even a little more because of the Providence area.
Have you been affected with, about your income with, I know that you have to get those face-to-face forms and have like?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, I'm well, I'm familiar with that too.
Yeah, we have. There's a couple of things.
Has that been affecting your bottom line? Yeah.
Yeah, because we can't bill unless we get that form signed.
Right.
Yeah, that, and there's a therapy requirement that we have to have physical therapists going on every 13th visit to do a certain assessment, and so you have to, it's a bookkeeping nightmare, scheduling nightmare.
I know the VNS up in the Massachusetts area is having big issues with that too.
Same thing, yeah.
And that's going to be hitting their bottom line.
Exactly.
And I think the Boston VNA actually closed, didn't they not? I think I heard that because of the financial difficulties, so.
I didn't hear that they closed, but it is, there are agencies closing.
Oh, there are, yeah.
There'll be fewer.
Quite a few of them, yeah. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
The next agency on the list is Thundermist Health Center of South County, and I see that Carrie is with us.
Hi, Carrie Strickland. I'm the Executive Director of this site. I'm going to be one minute. I just want to, we're just so grateful that you're keeping it at level funding, and I want to thank you for all your support in the past. And I got a little new data this week. In my application, I said we were 33% uninsured, and we're up to 41%. And as Steve said, this money does go to cover the gap between our charges and what we're able to recover from third-party pairs and grants. And like Mary Lou, we have the same mission, and that's to serve all regardless of ability to pay. And so, the other reason I came is just to see if you had any questions.
Any questions here at the table for Carrie, Polly?
Carrie, are we able to do the dental work that we've done in the past?
So far. There's the big threat underway to cut it in the budget, as you've probably all seen in the paper. Right? Yeah, and if that passes, we'll have to do dramatic cutbacks, if not close the dental program. Yeah. But I'm hopeful. It's, we've been on the edge other years, and it's passed, so.
Kathy?
I had the honor of sitting next to Carrie a couple of weeks ago at Polly's last meeting as the chairperson of the Thundermist, and as I said to her in the past, and she reminded me that in my past life of my other career, I used to be in all the Thundermists all over the state, and they really do do God's work. It's, you know, see the patients who are really down and out and seeing in those waiting rooms and, you know, going in and getting the services at Thundermist, you know, I always wondered where they would have gone to get that help, that you guys have always been there, and especially the West Warwick Facility, I was looking through the brochure, and they've, you know, I just want to compliment, you know, Polly, who I know always recuses herself on the Thundermist, you know, votes, but really just phenomenal job in what you've done in that particular area, and what you do here and up in the One Socket area too. It's just been, you know, it's great, and I'm glad to see the new facility, that you guys were able to get some money from federal grants and at least be able to serve more people, so congratulations for all the work that you guys do. It's great work. I've seen it firsthand.
Thank you. I repeat your comment to my staff all the time. Any other questions?
No, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ellis, excuse me.
I'm sorry, Jim.
Steve, could you just explain for everyone the total municipal funding column in here, whether it's Thundermist or some of the first four that we heard, just?
Yeah, one of the details that I provide the council is to look at what the level of funding is from South Kingston, using a universe of what other local governments are contributing to the agencies, and then looking at what the percentage of the client base is of the agency to what the percentage is of how much we're paying. So, is there a fair share that's being paid? And unfortunately, with some of the agencies, what we're seeing, and Thundermist is a classic example, is that while it's a service area, which is really all of Washington County, there's only two communities that are participating, South Kingston at $24,000, and I believe, I think it was Jamestown for $1,500. And all the other, all of the other municipalities have, you know, are not providing funding for the, for that agency. So, when you look at it, South Kingston's share, say with Thundermist, is 70% of the total funds that they're receiving, yet our client base is 35%. So certainly, South Kingston continues to meet what its responsibilities are. Unfortunately, in hard times, some of the other communities have had to make more drastic cuts, I guess, than we have, but this is not dissimilar to many of the other agency fundings. So, South Kingston continues to lead the way, even with a meager amount of $145,000, it would be well-accepted if it was coming from other communities at the same level.
I just wanted folks at home and everyone to realize that we really step to the plate with just about all these agencies.
Okay, if we move on, the next agency was Phoenix House of New England, Simpatico. The funding request with Phoenix was to maintain level funding at the $12,000 level. This is another agency where what we're seeing is that very little funding is coming. For South Kingston purposes, there's over $70,000 in uncompensated payments. Obviously, you know, all of your agencies are going to demonstrate what full cost would be for their services. If they were buying the service or the services being reimbursed through a third-party provider such as Blue Cross or Medicare, certainly the prices would be, that they were collecting would be discounted as well. So, yes, there is a considerable amount of money, but when we look at Phoenix House, South Kingston and Westerly are the only two contributors. South Kingston was providing $12,000, and Westerly was providing $500. So, again, I think Simpatico, Phoenix House has a more direct relationship. The larger client base is from South Kingston, yet at the same time, there really is not a lot of distribution. They are seeing an increase in the number of client base that they're seeing with alcohol and drug-related problems for counseling purposes that they provide. Next agency is Johnny Cake Center.
Hi, Susan Kastadis, Executive Director at the Johnny Cake Center.
Susan, if it'd be more comfortable if you and Jeff would like to take the table, please feel free. Thank you.
Pull it towards you, the button.
Better?
Yeah.
Share my gratitude to you for your continued support of the Johnny Cake Center. As you know, challenging times the past couple of years for all the social service agencies that are here, and I know that without the support of the town and the community as a whole, it'd be very, very difficult for all of us to do the great work that we're doing. I have some updated statistics that I'll give to you before I leave that just kind of tell you what's going on recently. You'll notice that there is a decrease in some of our numbers, nowhere near where we were a few years ago, but one of the things that we're always mindful of, and I'm sure you can agree, is that behind all those stats are some very real people with some real problems and great need. And over the holidays, of which you all were there to help us, and Thanksgiving, I took the opportunity to put some journal books out throughout the center and all the programs that we did, and had people share their thoughts on what it meant to come to the Johnny Cake and get help. Those were published in our recent newsletter, which all of you should have a copy coming in the mail, and I, this great picture of Polly in there as well, so I hope that you'll take time to read those and what it means to folks to come to Johnny Cake Center to get help, and hope to see you all again on Thanksgiving.
So, we put it out in the package form today.
What's that?
They got the newsletter today.
It did, great. So, I hope you all come back at Thanksgiving and help us out, because we really enjoy having you there with us on site. Thank you. Jeff?
Just on behalf of the Board, I would like to express our appreciation for the contributions from the town, and your interest and your commitment to helping everyone in this town. We still have a severe problem with hunger and poverty in this town. Sometimes it's not as visible as it is in the cities, but we have severe pockets, people with problems with drugs, people with problems with mental health issues, and this town really has done a good job over the years. And Johnny Cake, I'm real proud to be part of the Board. The agency's going to be celebrating its 40th anniversary in 2013, and it's an important organization, and I'm glad you're working with us and the other social service agencies. That collaboration is really important.
Questions here at the table. Polly?
Jeff, when you're raising money, do you, has it been, have you been able to keep up the same level that you have in the past years, just thinking of the economic times?
Well, it's interesting, the, our Executive Board was looking at our financials we do every month, and the funding for the first two months of this calendar year are down a little bit, though the number of contributors is up, which is really interesting. So, people are trying to help as much as they can, but the contributions might be, you know, a little bit smaller.
Kathy?
You guys do a great job. It's one of my favorite things here in the town, and I just want to thank you for the documentation and the updates that you give us constantly. It's not constantly, but you give us, you know, not besides your newsletter, we get some updates too, and some information sent here from Town Hall and things that are going on, and I appreciate that, and it keeps us all very mindful of, you know, why we do this, and, you know, just to keep the news and awareness up. So, that's one of the things that I really like about the Johnny Cake Center, and just how much you keep us informed with all your information. You guys are right on top of it, and it, and just to see the contribution at work, so thank you for that. And how's your peanut butter supplies? Are they, okay? All right. Because I know that's the big staple too. All right.
It is. Washington Trust was doing a great job with it.
Okay.
In fact, my staff ordered today from the food bank, and I said, "Why didn't you order peanut butter?" Because we're plenty.
Because at Thanksgiving, we were down to four jars.
Four jars.
I remember.
I remember.
Further questions here at the table? Jim?
So, Steve, on this one, 40% of the total municipal funding, yet 73% of clients, so.
The only two contributors in Aragantet and South Kingston for funding for the agency in the current year, I'm not sure if there's requests that have been made to other municipalities, but again, a lion's share of the service levels are for South Kingston. In fact, on the most recent detail, they had almost 1,150 households from South Kingston that were receiving services registered within that agency, and that represented 73% of the base of services. Naragantet was second with 26% for over 400 households. But at this point, the total local contributions that are being made to the agency in the current year were about 28,000, of which we were providing the 22.
Okay, yeah, I was just looking at the numbers kind of reversed, some of the others where I would have jumped on those and said, "Why aren't we giving more?"
I just have a quick question. The contributions that you reference, they like from private citizens or people in the town?
For the most part, they're private citizens, but we do have a few small foundations, and then there's a lot of folks that go out there and do events for us that, like the Pier Plunge in Aragantet, you know, the Lions Club and those types of folks, Wakefield Rotary, so we'll get a few thousand dollars for those types of things.
That's great. And I just want to, you know, acknowledge to all the people, you know, viewing tonight that all of the agencies here in front of us tonight, the human service agencies, if there's any contributions, I mean, that's the type of community that we live in. It's a very generous, generous community. So, thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next agency is the Kane Child Development Center. The request for the 2012-13 year was level funding at $9,000. We proposed the funding at that same level. The details on this agency is that they're providing, again, for asking assistance for uncompensated services rendered to South Kingston client base. In this case, it's not the number of clients, but the fact that there's at least two children through the program that are South Kingston that would not have the benefit of that program without the contribution that's being made through the agencies. Again, when we look at it, the funding for the 1112 year, current year, the $9,000 was the only agency that was providing, South Kingston was the only municipality providing general supports to this, to this program. The next agency is the South County Community Action. I think council is familiar with Community Action. Community Action's objectives is to really serve as a umbrella agency to solicit federal and philanthropic funds for distribution for low and moderate income, both for economic development purposes, housing, and housing and family. When we look at the comps on this, this agency, approximately 18% of their family service is for South Kingston residents, yet 41% of the contributions that are made from municipals are coming from South, South Kingston. There's no questions, I'll move on to Welcome House. I know Linda's here. A woman of few words.
Come and sit at the table, Linda.
I'm the Executive Director of Welcome House. The gentleman sitting to my left, that's my left, is Reverend Clay Barry from the Wakefield Baptist Church. He is the Chair of our Board, and I asked him to join us tonight. Thank you for your funding. Level funding is a thousand times better than decreased funding. We've already learned to live with it, but now we have to learn to live with it harder. Some of the statistics that I've laid out here for you tonight, I hope you can see We serviced, the state says 51, we say 59 because there's a discrepancy in the computer reporting system. So, I went and used the 51 individuals, staying an average of 67.4 days, and using the federal acceptable FEMA numbers of $12.50 per day. Per person, the total amount for those 51 individuals is $42,967.50. The soup kitchen, those are only South Kingston residents. We serviced 132 individuals totally. The soup kitchen, again, 2,827 meals specifically for South Kingston residents, and again, the federal response of $1.25 a meal equals $3,533.75. The volunteers in this community have been phenomenal. They are the highest number of volunteers from any town in Washington County. There were 84 different volunteers, providing 818 hours, .5 hours of service, at the in-kind rate of federal in-kind rate of $15, and that equated to $12,277.50. I know that it's important for you to have those numbers in front of you. 51 individuals represents 44% of the total number of people that we service. We do apply for human service funding from all the other towns except for Westerly and We also apply for CDBG for operating and rehab money for continuing services at Welcome As a couple of people were mentioning earlier, the numbers are down federally, the numbers are down statewide, but they are not equal in Washington County. And that's my latest little bugaboo, the inequity in funding for Washington County, for all the human service agencies. And I've now gotten, received two people at the state level who agree that there's a tremendous inequity down here in Washington County. So, that plays an additional role with the human service funding of the agencies. I, before I leave, I'm going to pass you all out a gift, which are the pledge sheets for the Walk for Shelter this year. It's our twenty-fifth year. And we look forward to seeing all of you walk and enjoy the nice weather and have a good time. Lady, you want to say something?
Linda, could you just give the public viewers the date of that, the walk?
I'm sorry, thank you. You want to be the PR person at Welcome? That is April sixth. That's April sixth, Good Friday, at nine AM is the kickoff at the Peace Dale Congregational Church. And you can pick up pledge sheets on Facebook or at Welcome House.
I'd like to add my, my profound gratitude for this community and providing the services that it does all. I mean, I interact with a lot of these services as the pastor of the Baptist church here in town, but this is an organization that I see the need for and also see the fruits of on a regular basis. And I, I think this is some of the best money that this town is investing right now. Because in this economy, Welcome House provides not just a safety net to catch people from falling further, they're providing a bounce to help people regain their status, their stability, their ability to reinvest their own lives in the community and become contributing citizens and, and meaningful contributing citizens in this, in this town. This is money that is extremely wisely spent because I have seen Linda and her staff squeeze the value of three dollars out of everyone that they have in their possession, I think. And that's not to say that you can diminish their funding by two-thirds and get the same bang for that dollar. It's to say that this is money that goes a long way towards making this the kind of community that we want to be. And I really appreciate your investment and appreciate maintaining the funding, if not increasing it over time, any more than we're able to as a town. So, thank you very much.
Questions here at the table? Jim?
Linda, how do you, how do the feds come up with a dollar twenty-five on the meals?
It is the federal FEMA requirements that are published yearly. That's for, consider, it's what's called mass shelter services, which we apply for every year. And that's their basis. So for every person who is signed into the agency, that we have to match. So in other words, if I get fifteen thousand dollars from FEMA, I have to be able to show the number of people that equals fifteen thousand dollars at a base rate of twelve dollars and fifty cents a day.
Quite an index.
I don't know where that, they play the numbers.
Maybe Alan could tell us how that number comes.
And I don't think these wonderful cooks out in the community know that the federal government says their meal is worth a dollar twenty-five either.
Something. Polly?
Linda, are you going to have the garden again this year?
Yes, yes, we are. We're just waiting for that right person to come into the shelter or volunteer to be able to maintain it. Because we are down, there's only three staff people and the dog. And so taking care of that garden is somewhat of a, an additional burden, although we need it. And we give fruits and vegetables out for free every year. But, so we're waiting for that guest to come into the shelter who loves to do that and has a talent and/or the volunteer to do that.
Carol?
Linda, do you still collect the pennies in the garbage can?
We still have the change campaign. And since that campaign started, we've probably collected, and we're still collecting it, close to ten thousand dollars. So far since we started. I think we started about two years ago. So that's not bad for change, you know? We don't. When we announced we had this, Bank Newport called us and said, "Number one, we are not soliciting you to open an account with us. We heard about this, we think it's a great idea, and we're offering you to use our change machine." So I usually hijack one of the guys to go over with me and drag the bucket in and put it in their change. We have now opened an account with them because it's so easy, I can just deposit it right there. But that was not, I didn't do that for about a year. So that's, you know, but they, they were really very good about it. They were very willing to help.
It's a great idea.
She's got a lot of good ideas.
Oh, she does.
We call those my shower ideas. I have a dry erase marker in my shower and I get these great weird ideas and I write them on the tile.
Kathy, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I like you here. It's a little different from, from the last time that you've here. I noticed it in the paper, too, so.
Thank you.
And how, you're full, I'm sure, all the time. So there isn't ever a time that you, you have to turn somebody away? Has that happened? And then I was going to ask you about the other properties, that obviously not the part of the house, the Welcome House, but the other properties, how they all full capacity, too?
We have, we have one, well, we had a flood. One of our units, we had a pipe burst and a ceiling cave-in, et cetera. So that unit has been vacant now. This will be the third month. All the other family units are full. We do have room for two singles in transitional housing. And another family is being interviewed to go into a three-bedroom that has just recently become available also. And then we're just full, full. And the shelter, there's a turnover. I think we had one female bed this morning, somebody didn't come back last night, so. But we report that in daily to the United Ways Two-One-One, so they know where every available bed is throughout the state.
That's how that Two-One-One works for you?
And we have this year had the police department bring in families and individuals over the winter. They sleep on the dining room floor and we find them sheltered the following day if we don't have room. Thank you.
Jim? I'm sorry, Reverend Clay, did you want to respond?
Along the same lines, Linda, I just, I was going to ask you about the police, if they brought in clients for shelter, but do you have many people knocking on the door who need help?
Yeah, this winter, there were more people just knocking on the door and walking in seven, eight o'clock at night than we've ever had. And those individuals are technically not counted on this board because a full intake isn't done, et cetera, and they're not entered into our state reporting system. We find them additional, if we can't take them in because we don't have any room, then we find them shelter elsewhere, whether, you know, it's in Westerly or Providence or Warwick or wherever.
In your main headquarter building, how many people can you shelter overnight there?
According to the fire department?
Give us the fire department number, Linda.
There are thirteen emergency shelter beds, two of which are handicapped. And then there are three additional beds on the third floor, single individuals who are in what's considered transitional housing. So the entire building holds twenty individuals. And then if we have additional people who are walking in or brought in by the police department or referred in by the hospitals, whatever, they sleep on the dining room floor.
Do you have pull-out couches?
We don't have any pull-out couches. We, you know, we don't even want to go back to the bedbug issue.
I'd also add that this is more than just sheltering individuals on an emergency basis. This is also providing some job possibilities, some training. Recovery is a big component of the Welcome House program. So it's a holistic approach to, to enabling people to sustain their lives. So we're not just warehousing people, we're really working with them to try to help them, again, resecure their livelihoods and their, their well-being.
Kathy?
And I was going to ask, with the education exchange really being right across the street from you, if that's been a help, that's one of the things when it was moved over there?
No, it's interesting that you, we have a gentleman there who's older gentleman, and he's illiterate. And we hooked him up with the education exchange, and they were phenomenal with him and still are. We found that he's never made a paycheck in his life. And being illiterate, there were a few problems, you know, obviously. We got him to start cooking at the soup kitchen on a daily basis, and he loved it. The next thing we knew, we found he was really monitoring the rules and helping people get through the rules. There's no way this man is going to get a job. Well, we decided that his illiteracy was a disability. We tried him out on a couple of week basis as a PM house manager. And he can't get into the computer and type in the computer, and so we gave him a tape recorder. And every night that he's on, the following morning, the assistant director transcribes his recordings and puts them in our logbook. So this is perfect documentation. And he got his first paycheck. He refuses to cash it. He framed it. And then we have another gentleman who's spent a lot of time in jail and is really committed to making a change in his life. And he wants to be a counselor. And so what we've done is we've trained him. He intervened in a little bit of a situation the other day that got a little potentially bad, let's put it that way. And he went right up to this individual and calmed him down, got him out of the shelter, helped him do what he needed to do. And we were all amazed that he was this good. I thought he was better than the staff. And I don't mean them, I mean me, because I just back out, get out. But anyway, he, he did an amazing job. So now we've got him doing orientation with residents. See, if he would really like to do this, he can go to school now. And we can help him pursue that kind of thing. Not everybody's ready for that, but right now, we've got about four or five of them in the shelter who are doing that. And they're working in the shelter and they're learning a trade, something different that's kept them in jail or on drugs or whatever their entire life. And they're seeing there's another opportunity out there. And they like the way they're treated. They're treated as one of us.
Further comments, questions here at the table?
I'm sorry, Steve, don't even think of docking me, though.
I'd be scared to death.
You would not.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Linda.
It's okay.
Absolutely. Thank you, Linda. Thank you. And what if he says no, right? Have you done this before?
Thank you, Linda.
Did you get a toaster when you opened that account?
Don't forget Alan.
The next agency is...
Linda, don't forget Alan. He controls the purse strings in town.
I wouldn't forget you.
Sorry, Steve.
Fortunately, we got through that one. Domestic Violence Resource Center. The, the agency wasn't able to be here tonight. They had a conflict where they were in Narragansett for the same purpose and they were making the presentation. They felt it was more important to be there because at this point, they aren't receiving funding from that, from that municipality, and they may be able to see it this year. Just in terms of a little bit of background on it, we have about sixteen percent of the client base that uses services through this agency and are currently paying about thirty-one percent of the cost of, thirty-one percent of what comes from local agencies. This agency, like all others, is attempting to be able to recoup some of the cost of non-paid-for services. There's a number of programs that they operate in the community as well as the shelter that they have operated for, for many years. If there's no questions, we can move on. Next agency was the Education Exchange. The Education Exchange had requested a four thousand, five hundred dollars, which would have been a two thousand dollar increase. Again, we kept all agency fundings at the current year level and maintained the recommendation for a twenty-five hundred dollar contribution to the, to the agency. South Kingstown constitutes twenty-nine percent of the population attending the Education Exchange programs. This is a six percent increase according to their records over the prior year. They had eighty-one South Kingstown students attending the Education Exchange, predominantly from the Wakefield-Peasdale area. They were unemployed or underemployed and were working till they were their GED. As far as local funding is concerned, they receive funding from the town of Exeter and they receive funding from the town of Westerly. A total of sixty-five hundred dollars is provided to this agency during the eleven-twelve year. If there's no questions, we'll move on to the Washington County Coalition Children. The Coalition for Children had received in the current year, four hundred dollars. They had asked for a six hundred dollar increase. We maintain the level at the four hundred dollar level. They did complete the town's application. And they are demonstrating about sixty-two hundred of the twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred clients that they serve with a year as coming from South Kingstown. Their overall budget's around seventy-five thousand dollars. As far as the funding that they receive, at this point, they get about nineteen hundred dollars, a thousand from Westerly, four hundred from South Kingstown, and five hundred from Charlestown. So this is the only agency where we are lower than, we are not the highest contributor to the, to the agency. If there's no questions, we will move on. I'd ask you to go on to the outside service agencies. This is on page forty-one of your narrative.
Ella, could I ask a question before we go to this?
Jim?
Yes.
Yes, Steve, I'm sorry, back, pretty much a level funding the last three years on these charitable agencies. Where were we the previous two or three years, back seven and eight, where we're pretty close to one hundred forty-five thousand, four hundred? And do we, do we have any agencies that no longer apply for help to us?
Prior to, prior to this, that period, let me see, I can probably...
Yeah, we've got level funding on the sheet you gave us for ten-eleven, eleven-twelve, and proposed for twelve-thirteen. I just didn't know, previous two or three years, where we stood?
I can't open any of the numbers here.
Okay.
The funding came down, the funding had come down in the eight, nine, and 9-10 year. We had done a steady decline on those two years, but most of it was on the major agencies. At that point, South Shore Center, Hospice, and VNS, they were in the $29,000 range, is my recollection. But the smaller agencies, I don't think that there was any reductions for those.
Right. And do we get in touch with, are we missing any services here, agencies here, that maybe we should have cordial efforts to reach?
No, these are the only agencies, the only other agency that we have funded in the past was Volunteer Center of Rhode Island, and they did not request funding either in the 11-12 or the 12-13 year. And I think that the funding may have been about $400 or $250 going back a couple of years ago.
Okay, all right, thanks.
The municipal agencies, first agency is the Conservation Commission, and again, you can find this on page 25 of the detail. The Conservation Commission provides funding for five different, or four different services. One is it provides Salt Pond Coalition with $100, that's used for advocacy on, for the salt ponds from Westerly through Narragansett. The Wood Park, Etuk Watershed gets $150, that's used for water testing. South Shore Conservation District, Southern Rhode Island Conservation District gets $100 contribution, and the URI Cooperative gets $500, but that's the total of the $850 that the Conservation Commission works with. They invite each of those agencies to their meetings once a year in terms of getting feedback from them on the services that they're rendering. The second agency is the South Kingston Partnership for Prevention, and we have our director with us.
Hello, Eileen Stone, Coordinator of the South Kingston Partnership for Prevention. I want to thank you for your funding. As many of you know, we did not renew our Drug-Free Community Grant last year. They only gave out 80 grants, and we would have been a year six recipient, and I think they had over 550 applicants nationally. So when I looked at where the awards went, because Drug-Free Communities is being proven very effective on a federal level, working at local conditions, reducing substance abuse, they gave out predominantly year one grants, although there were a few year six. We're in the process of writing for that grant right now. You'll get that. It's due next week, and it's a very competitive bid process again this year. Last year, they gave out 80 grants, this year, they're giving out 30 nationally. So we'll see what happens. We did secure a grant through the state, a marijuana initiative. I don't know if you know, but Rhode Island is considered fifth in the nation for marijuana usage across the board, and we're number one usage with marijuana, ages between 17 and 24-year-olds, number one with Colorado and Vermont for the age group of 12 to 17-year-olds. So those are predominantly, we do have that grant from the state that we're working, it's predominantly high school population that we're working with. We recently purchased an evidence-based curriculum for the Health Department that they're being trained in and doing the pilot right now with the freshmen, and next year they'll launch it across the board in the health classes. They, I would go back a little bit to the marijuana initiative, and I didn't really understand the scope of the problem that they're talking about until I went to a training on Monday, and they showed us a map of the United States, and all the areas in blue were high 30-day usage, just the past 30 days, and all of New England is blue. And then you have Montana, Colorado, Oregon, and there's maybe one other state that's blue. And all of a sudden, it drove it home to me that Rhode Island's population is about 1 million people, which is the entire population of the state of Montana. So when you think of the density of the people in the area, it's a significant problem that we're facing, and there's still not a lot of research as far as conclusive evidence as far as long-term deficits, but one of the things that we see that's a major, major problem is the impaired driving. So it's going to be following a lot of the same protocols as the DWI-type protocol, but there's a lot of work that has to be done, and we're really starting on a ground level in a lot of ways. So we've moved our office into the high school, which is really nice. It's really nice to be in that building with, connecting with a lot of the population that we work with, and also with the population of teachers and administrators. It's what sometimes would take maybe three months to do, I can walk down the hall and set up a meeting. So it's, you know, the communication piece is very, very good. So do you have any questions that...
Any questions here at the table? I know that you have some vacancies, and we keep working on that. So is there any interested people that you know that have applied? Or are thinking about applying, I should say?
To the commission?
Right.
No, we have a couple of new coalition members, Perry Rasso from the Tunica Oyster Bar, a wonderful new addition to the partnership, and is really concerned about responsible beverage serving across the board for our community for safety purposes. We have another parent that joined recently. We have one vacancy, I believe, on the commission that we could fill.
And the meetings are still on Thursdays? Do you want to just, if anyone's interested?
Second Thursday of the month at the police station in the community room. And, you know, we cover sort of the gamut of the initiatives that we're working on. We, with this new grant, we're actually creating a new logic model. The other issue that we're working on besides marijuana is prescription drug abuse, and nationally, it's going up 400%. So these are real emerging threats that are coming down the pike. Our data from our Drug-Free Youth Survey that we did last year, we've done a really good job with tobacco and alcohol, but the emerging threats are really the marijuana and the prescription drug abuse. So we have a lot of resources that we really need to connect the dots on, you know, with URI, the pharmacy school, CVS, and a number of different initiatives, doctors in the hospital. So we always, you know, and we have people that are really willing to step up and get involved in those kinds of things. It will help to have the funding to really build that capacity.
So questions for Eileen here at the table?
Eileen, I know the police department does their thing where they have prescription drugs, and they take the prescription drugs...
The prescription drug takeback, right.
Exactly. And how often do they do that? And I'm sure you've heard...
It's actually, it's a federal government, it's the DEA is actually the one that coordinates that. They do it twice a year. Right now, they're, and they're trying to do it more frequently. One of the things that we talk about is, and again, we have to go through all the proper policies and procedures, is perhaps to establish a place where they can dispose of these drugs, because people, you know, don't want to hang on to them. They want to be able to get rid of them when they have them. You don't want, and that's a major way to reduce access to these types of things. So they're still working on it on a federal level, trying to make it more, you know, community-friendly, because right now, those drugs have to follow a chain of evidence because of the federal laws around a lot of that. And from what I understand, and I think they're addressing it, they have the takeback program, but one of the issues that they run into is the disposal themselves, because the drugs have to be incinerated.
That's what I was gonna say, most of them are incinerated, that's what happens to most doctors, officers.
Right.
Never cycle, company comes and takes them and burns them, right?
Right. So, but when you're doing stuff, you know, the takeback with those things on a national level, they get tons and tons of those drugs, and, you know, I mean, it's also educating people about the proper disposal of those drugs, not to put them down the toilet, you know, because that affects our water systems. So...
Comes back to council tables on waters and runs, and it's all traced right back.
Exactly. You know, and I mean, there's a lot of things that we can do when we're thinking sort of outside of the box, particularly around even marijuana. I mean, we need to start looking at zoning for the medical dispensaries, where they could go. I mean, this is just being proactive as opposed to reactive down the road, because even though not, there isn't, you know, a protocol for that per se, it may come to fruition. So we need to start thinking sort of, you know, a little bit futuristic about these things, rather than to react after the fact.
Jim?
Yeah, there's an article about Barrington in today's paper, about 18-year-olds the chief of police could not share with either the schools or their prevention group because of the, I don't know the legal world, but could not share those names of 18-year-olds or under.
Right. Under, underage. Under 18-year-olds, right. They're protected, right, under the juvenile. And that's something else that I think that we need to develop a little bit more, because juveniles do make mistakes, you know, and for them to have, you know, the stigma of a record or whatnot, but there's, one of the things I think that we need to develop and educate a little bit more parents on is that there are resources, that it's a restorative system for juveniles. In certain circumstances, there's the ride program, there's all kinds of different things that youth can get involved in that are, you know, that are educationally based, you know, that it's not necessarily that they have a record or all of those things when they make a mistake, you know. And we need to educate parents a little bit more about those types of things, because kids are going to make mistakes.
And does high school give you some time to show those shock films that maybe the police have before holiday periods or getting out of school, so on and so forth?
First, yeah. We collaborate a lot with the high school and the law enforcement on a lot of those things, but those shock value films have been proven to show just a very short sort of awareness, and then it's gone. So we're really trying to do more across, you know, the board. We did an Above the Influence campaign last year where we had 80 students over a three-week period that we worked with, and they did an activity called the Influence Project, where they had to define what influence meant to them. And they subsequently did a Tag It activity where they actually tag what they're above the influence. And Above the Influence is a national media campaign, and South Kingston was one of the 20 communities nationally to be, chosen to be part of the evaluation team. And it's shown, it's proven effective, because, and what we heard back from the kids is they want the information, they particularly like the brain information about what happens to their brains and performance, but they want to be the ones to decide. They want to be part of the dialogue of what's going on in making their choices. And I think one of the things that we really saw was is that they have a lot to say, you know. So I think reaching youth more on that type of an activity can have better far, you know, we call it pro-social bonding, they start to develop relationships with people and, you know, own their own behavior. You're welcome.
Thank you, Eileen. Any more questions? Thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you. Thank you guys for your support. You're really wonderful. Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks.
The next agency receiving funding is the Narrow River Preservation Association. Narrow River has received funding for many years from the town. This is an environmental citizens' action organization. The money that we provide specifically is used for water quality monitoring on Narrow River itself, in the amount of $500, same amount as was in the current year. The next agency is the Southern Rhode Island Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce had received in prior years $7,000 in contribution. This level of funding has been provided to the agency since the 1990-91 fiscal year. In 1989-90, the first year of funding from the town, approximately $3,000 was allotted, and $2,995 was actually incurred expense for the first year preparation of holiday decorations in the Main Street area. Subsequent to that, in 1991, the $7,000, $3,000 toward Christmas decorations, and $4,000 for a general contribution to the agency has been provided. Up through 2009, the split was the $3,000 for the holiday, $4,000. The council, and I believe the 9-10 year, provided the ability for the agency to be able to use the entire $7,000 as they saw fit, and that continued in 10-11 and 11-12. The funding was not proposed for the 2012-2013 year, based on the letter received from the Chamber of Commerce indicating that they were looking for a pilot agreement, and in lieu of that, we're not requesting funding from the town's general fund. On March 7th, we received, at the town manager's office, a letter for the council from the Chamber of Commerce indicating that they were withdrawing their request for the tax, property tax exemption, and asking that the vote granting their request be rescinded, and that they were requesting the reinstatement of the $7,000 contribution to the agency from, for the 2012-2013 fiscal year. The council received that letter at their meeting held on March 12th, and referred the letter to the March 15th, or tonight's work session, in view of the fact that the agency's funding request would be reviewed at this time. So that's the information on that. I'm not sure if there's agency representatives here that would like to speak to that issue.
My name's Clay Johnson, I'm the chair of the Southern Rhode Island Chamber. It's good to be back here, and thanks for the history lesson. I didn't know all that information, so thank you. Dick Pike has actually been putting together information for you guys. He wasn't able to make the meeting tonight, so I'm here in his place. There's been a lot of discussion on this, I'm happy to answer any questions. The one issue that I know came up that Dick passed to me that I should address specifically was the IRS characterization of the organization. As I mentioned on my last visit here, it is a 501(c)(6) organization, and after several requests from the media, I learned that a prior 990 that was filed was incorrect. Our accountant has sent me the latest 990 on March 5th, which I had reviewed and authorized him to sign. That accurately lists us as a 501(c)(6). I brought, that's probably not available online yet, but I brought a copy tonight, so you're welcome to have that. But I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions here at the table? Jim?
Does anyone ever, you know, you have 500, what, 60, 70 members? Anyone ever put together a total number of employees with all of those members?
I don't think we've done that with our specific chamber. We're part of a chamber coalition of about 10 chambers that represents, give or take, approximately 10,000 employees.
Okay, so if you broke that down to South Kingston, is there some way to break that down, how many of those 500 so are in South Kingston?
If you're asking me to take a shot at it, most of our organizations are one to 10 employees.
I mean, I certainly know you have people like, I think the Muse has 100 employees, but...
Certainly, certainly.
Yeah, so I just don't know if you've ever broken down those numbers, I'd certainly love to see those numbers at some point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Further questions here at the table? Okay.
Thank you.
Well, no, actually, I have a question.
Kathy?
I just wanna go back. Since you weren't part of it, the history of the, and it was a refresher for you. Back in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, when it, as Mr. Officer, the council saw fit to give you the, the, the seven thousand dollars in total. I do recall that I did ask about holiday decorations and making sure that those were going to be put up. This past Christmas time, did you put up any of the town Christmas decorations, the wreaths and so forth? Did the chamber have anything to do with it?
I'm not sure the status on the wreaths. There were holiday banners that were put up.
Yeah, I know the banners. They were paid for by the different individual businesses and...
Right.
Right. And then they were, they were put up. But the holiday wreath that went down on Main Street and...
I don't know the status of the wreath. I can get it for you.
Steve, do you know the status of who put those wreaths up this past Christmas time?
This year, the Communications Division installed the, the wreaths. I think there was, Andy helped me, fifteen or eighteen of them.
Oh, fifteen, yeah.
The rest of them, we had to dispose of based on their condition. But those were, those were placed on the poles through the Communications Department.
And I believe that was discussed at a town council meeting, saying that the town would take that responsibility over. And do you recall how many wreaths they were in total? I know some of them need replacing. And is the town responsible for the replacement?
We haven't spent any money to replace the wreaths. We worked with the seniors program, provided the bows that were placed on those wreaths before they were put up on the, on the poles. But no, there's been no municipal dollars expended as far as replenishing the wreaths.
And do you recall what the total was, Steve? How many wreaths there were to start with? If there's fifteen left, or you may know.
About double, about thirty.
About thirty.
And I mean, and over the years, we've done everything from having them lit to not having them lit, to having them with just simply bows. At this point, we can't light them any longer because of the, the electricity in terms of the connections for it are not proper, they're not properly grounded.
I think, I think they're probably have seen their day. Probably should talk about replacing some of them.
Should the town talk about replacing them? Or since we gave our holiday money to the chamber, do we replace those? Or should that be the chamber's responsibility?
In the past, when there was three thousand dollars a year, what Allen would do is to collect receipts from the chamber demonstrating up to the three thousand dollars that had been spent on services. Those services could have been the actual installation service, or they could have been
Replacement.
Upgrading of the, the holiday materials that would be placed on the poles. But it was a combination. In the latter years, it really became a, a large expense, I think, associated with just having the materials put up on the poles.
Yeah, the bars and the, that is a solid part of the, the cost of them. The other thing that I wanted to point out was last year when we did this review for the outside agencies, and they haven't come up yet because we're working on them, I think they might be coming up next, was the Downtown Merchants Association, who had mentioned, I think it was Justin Galant, who brought up those wreaths specifically, saying at the holiday times, they look like they, I think he said something like they had been backed up on and so forth. And it kind of, the light bulb, excuse me, the light bulb kinda went off over my head, like, what's going on with these wreaths in that particular area of town? Because, you know, you drive by and they might have one light bulb lit on them, and they really did look quite pathetic. So, that was a concerning point to me that I just wanted to bring up. For that three thousand dollars, I know that you talk about the banners, but that was an individual fundraiser that you did with individual businesses, with their little, on the corner of them had their name of sponsoring that particular banner. Not that all businesses could afford to probably do it, I'm sure. But, you know, that holiday money, I specifically had asked about that. And it, when Justin Galant sat there last year, I don't know if Justin's here, gonna, I can't tell, but I don't think I see him, and spoke about that, I thought, you know, this is something that we're gonna have to really kind of, you know, look into. And I just have one other question, too. When you mentioned that you, Steve, uh, Jim had asked you about the membership and the total employees in South Kingstown, you said you belong to a coalition of ten chambers with ten thousand employees. Is that?
Correct.
Okay. Are you still part of that coalition of chambers?
Yes.
You are still, still part of that. I wasn't quite sure, because with the name change and your, the lawsuit, I wasn't quite sure. Are you, if you're still all...
It didn't change our status at all.
It didn't say it's changed your status in the coalition?
Nope, we still pay membership.
I'll clarify that, 'cause, you know, just try to help me understand what's, what's going on. 'Cause I, I'll, I'll be honest, I'm not sure if I'm gonna fund the seven thousand. I'm not saying that we're gonna give you zero. I'm not quite sure between zero and seven thousand dollars where the chamber should be funded. That three thousand dollars really seems to be, you know, the money that we give you, we don't quite, kinda know where it goes. And so, you know, being of the news of what's going on in the University of Rhode Island and following the money, I think that maybe we do, do need more documentation on what does it, I don't think that that's, you know, a, a tough thing to ask you to document where our money goes that we give you. I, I see there was some problems with the nine-ninety forms. What other issues are there that might, we might not be seeing? So, I wanna document whatever money it is that the town does give you, and wherever we come up with it. I think that we need a clearer documentation of what's going on at that chamber. And also...
Polly, if I could just follow up. Steve, do you, I just don't want to leave the topic and then come back. Steve, do you know, or can you find out the date when those wreaths were purchased? I mean, obviously, they don't last forever.
Nineteen ten. Nineteen ten, probably was around there.
Probably back to nineteen ninety.
I believe that they would probably have gone back to the first year.
Okay, so they probably are twenty years old.
There may have been some that were replaced along the way, or a couple of additional ones. You know, one of the problems that we've run into with the Christmas decorations has been the, the need to expand the area that's gonna be served, because it's no longer just the old, older downtown business district. There's also that if the town was gonna provide those type of services there, it should be in Peastale as well, and the upper district. And I think some of the issues that we had in terms of trying to figure out how could we work with the banners, how could we work with the, the fee banners, and how could we work with the wreaths and try to distribute. I mean, essentially, the amount of money that was available on an annual basis was, was really insufficient to be able to address the overall needs. Whether it was coming through chamber with the three thousand dollars being expended, or if it was the town spending that money, it would have been, it would have been difficult to really provide a, a good display. What we've seen is that, you know, the downtown merchants or Peastale merchants each have had their own ideas on how to, uh, dress up those areas for the, for the holiday period. And I think each of the different sections, even, even the, uh, Old Tower Hill Road area had, had the, the four fee banners used this year. So, that, I don't think that we can expect that we're going to have a municipally organized holidays program unless there's a lot more money that's gonna be committed to it. You know, several towns end up where the day after Thanksgiving, their public work crews are out there stringing lights. We have never provided that type of service, nor would I suggested something with the size workforce that we have at this point that we could really accommodate. But, you know, if you're looking at really trying to straighten out the wreaths, it's not just the wreaths, it's going to be, uh, how do they fit in different areas as well?
Kath, I'm sorry. Kath, is it still on this topic?
Yeah, it is on, it is, no, it's on this topic.
Do you mind?
No, that's not, I don't wanna jump along. It is, in just, in, in saying that, and that's, it's true. It's, it's tough to decorate, you know, the whole town and do it, you know, for the holidays and, and cover, and cover the areas. And since the Main Street people, uh, Main Street merchants have done such a great job, and so certainly has the Peastale revitalization, I'm looking at Leslie, she looks very tanned tonight, that, that might be something that could help to maybe use some of the money to help support them, because that's really where that money was supposed to go to originally, whether it's to get new wreaths, that we leave it to them to, to enhance their budget, because that was an issue, that was the downtown merchants' issue last time. And, and, and I'm sure Peastale has done a lovely job with their tree. I don't know what their electric bill is with that Christmas tree. But that might be something that the council might wanna take into consideration and, and use some of the money to support them further, because that was a concern with that money. And that's where that was supposed to go. And I know that I did ask that, that was still gonna be maintained. I know I specifically asked that, and I was told that it was. So, thank you. That's what I wanted to say.
And I'll just piggyback on that. And I know that there was discussion with that dollar amount that was given to the chamber at the town council table. So, just so that we have the records accurate, is it possible for you to, not saying now, Steve, go back and find the minutes of that meeting where the money that was given to the chamber for the holiday decorations at the town council, and I'm not sure it came to an official motion, you know, but to look at the minutes of that, that discussion that night?
Well, I would have the clerk's office review that and see if we can come up with that, that record. If we can, we'll, uh, we'll provide you with the detail.
Thank you.
I'm not sure exactly when that meeting occurred. I would think that it was probably during the budget session with the, the nine-ten year.
And is, if you don't mind, just had to, as I recall, I don't think there was a formal motion. I think that they were looking for money to support summer hours, and I don't even know whatever became of that. And that's what they were looking for, extra money for. And I don't think there was ever, ever an official vote on that, as I recall. I mean, you can go back and check the minutes, but I don't remember, and I don't recall voting. I don't know if I remember. I don't recall voting on that officially. I remember the discussion, it was just discussion.
So, just so we have the accurate record, we'll go back and ask you to look for that. But thank you.
I'll have you take a look.
New topic. Polly?
New topic. I, I'm concerned about this seven thousand dollars. And it's a question for Steve. What is the process now? Do we have to tonight? I realize this is a work session, we can take no vote. But how do we get the message to you of how much money we wanna spend on this?
Your message will be delivered next Monday at five, five-thirty, is it?
Five.
Five o'clock. That's when we have the, the actual preliminary budget hearing, hearing, adoption meeting. If, in fact, you were going to amend any section of the budget that's been proposed to you, you would do that at, at Monday night's session. Essentially, there's one item of business on, that's on that agenda. That is the adoption of the council's two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen preliminary budget. You have my budget where if you wanted to add X number of dollars to any account, you would then propose an amendment to the budget as presented for the specific line item that you wanted to increase or decrease. And then with a majority vote, it would amend that budget. There could be any number of amendments that could be considered on Monday evening.
Yeah.
Subsequent to that, let's, well, let's finish with Monday. Let's say that there's three amendments that have tendered, that are adopted by the council on Monday night. We would then have a council's preliminary adopted budget. We then take that preliminary adopted budget through two budget hearings. Those budget hearings are, are scheduled for April tenth and April eleventh. You would also have the opportunity for the public to be able to petition the council with the twenty-five signatures, either to increase your budget or decrease your budget, add, subtract, whatever they want. As long as there's twenty-five legitimate signatures there, the canvassing authority signed off on, the council would hold its final budget adoption on April thirtieth. On April thirtieth, the council would have to, where the twenty-five signatures were there, have to either vote up or vote down, or modify the request that came from that citizen petition. The council would then adopt its final budget. So, essentially, you could put an amendment through on the preliminary budget and adjust it any way you wanted by the time you adopted the final budget. So, the first step in terms of modifying the manager's proposed budget is Monday night.
Monday night.
And then from that, it's really all the way up till the budget final adoption on April thirtieth, the council would have the ability to make additional revisions if necessary, both on the expenditure side and the revenue side.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah, I, I would like to just express my feeling on, on this, um, subject, because from the beginning, as you know, I voted in opposition to having them get the 501(c), well, to get the tax abatement. And, and I'm very pleased that they decided that that was not the right way to go. And I, I think it was pretty obvious that although they're certainly a very good nonprofit organization for business, they're not what I consider a charity. That's one of my main issues, why I would not consider the full seven thousand for the chamber. And another reason is the, some of the things the chamber has done, such as changing their name to Southern Rhode Island Chamber of Commerce, I think it expands the chamber so that it now deals with a much larger group of, a much larger region. And I don't think South Kingstown is any longer the one place they can come to for money. So, I would hope in this seven thousand that they would look to some of the other regions that they will be covering for some of the money that they have in the past expected South Kingstown to give them. And I, I, there was really quite a uproar, I think, in the, we got several letters, Mara Troctenberg, we all got a copy of that letter. And she said that she felt very strongly that if we gave the money to the, if we gave the tax abatement to the Chamber of Commerce, it would open it up to a whole slew of businesses that could now come before the council and expect money. It was a strange year, I think, for the Chamber of Commerce to come to the town council for the tax abatement, which I consider is, is very sacred. It's, it's something we give to just four other groups of charities. And I was surprised that it was even thought of, although I know it had been talked about in the past. But, so I'm for giving something to the chamber, but I don't think that South Kingstown is any longer obliged to give them the seven thousand.
Further questions here at the table or comments? Jim?
Yeah, Steve, going back to those other contributions to private agencies, the charitable group, um, the money we give to them, does that money go into the, their general fund? Or do we ask for documentation on where every dollar is spent?
No, we do not ask for documentation. It's the general contribution that's made to those agencies.
That's what I hope the whole world understands. Thank you.
Kathy?
Steve, I understand that we haven't documented that in the past. And I, as I pointed out, that I, I think that some of the issues that have arisen in the state recently, and we, you know, we've, we've gotten some information on what we do with some of the other charitable and what work that they've done, but we have no documentation. Is that unfair, do you think, to ask something like that? I don't mean to pull on your opinion here, but just to document, I'm sorry, Jim, you found that funny. I was quite serious of my questioning. Would it be unreasonable to ask for documentation of some of the town's money and where it goes? I mean, we've seen and we've gotten documentation from other...
Well, I think that what the agencies have done in the past is they document the value of the uncompensated services that are rendered. And in no case have the uncompensated services been less than what the amount is that, that we're providing a general contribution for. And remember that these agencies, several of these agencies are, you know, multimillion-dollar operations. Some of the contributions that you make are really just a general contribution that offsets some of their operational costs.
It would just be nice to know what, what it...
So, I'm not sure... So I'm not sure that I would be able to get a documentation on, you know, our question on the form always is, what happens if we don't give you the money? And the obvious answer is, we may have to cut back on the services that we provide as an agency. But I'm not sure that, you know, that, and some of them will say that we're using it for personnel and benefits, other ones will say we're doing it for a specific program. That's in their applications that they provide. I can give you copies, you know, the copies are about, you know, there's probably about 30 pages per application for what's filed. I can give copies of that if the council wants it, but I think that's the, that level of detail is as much as we would really be able to get because I'm not sure how you would prove it one way or the other.
It's just that they'd asked for it for, you know, during the summer service hours, and then I think that that hours ended up getting cut. And it just, to me, it just seems elusive. It just seems to be, you know, they told that that's what they were going to use it for. It didn't go that way. I asked about, you know, that it was going to continue the Christmas decorations or the holiday, excuse me, holiday decorations. So that's, I'm just asking. It would just be kind of nice to be able to follow the money.
As I originally said, the holiday decorations was on a cost reimbursement basis in the 90s.
Yeah, and we just didn't see any of it happen.
And I'm not sure that we continued it up much later than the 90s. I don't think it was over the last several years because we knew that there was more than $3,000 that was necessary to be able to deal with the replacement on some of the units as well as the actual installation of the units.
All right. I just think people are interested in what's going on over there and then with this, with this whole 990 that just came up this week, which, you know, it just seems a paperwork issue. So, that's, that's fine, Steve.
All you folks have to do is tell me what you want and I'll get you whatever you want.
That's fine. I just...
All I'm saying to you is that with human service agencies, I'm not sure what I can get from them. When they're showing me that they're losing $100,000 in uncompensated services and we're giving them $5,000, what they're going to say is it's going toward the personnel costs.
Okay, that's fine. Just asking if it's unreasonable to ask for.
And I just think that the general sense of the question is that maybe we need to reflect and really treat all of the requests equitably rather than asking one for specific information that we're not asking from others. So I don't know if that was your general sense, Jim. Carol?
It seems to me that they've given the same information that the other agencies have given. I mean, at the last hearing, I heard testimony from, I think it was Joe Iacoy and Dick Pike about the number of phone calls that came in, the number of referrals that were funneled into South Kingstown. I mean, Clay, didn't, didn't your organization get up here and give us a lot of testimony regarding that?
We did, and Dick passed on some of those numbers. I'm happy to go through some of them again.
Sure, why don't you do that? I mean, maybe, because the other agencies sat here tonight and they talked about, you know, how many residents they serviced and how many...
Right.
Meals they served and...
I mean, if we...
Why don't you give us some of that?
Sure. If we take a step back and look at this big picture, as has been pointed out, we're not a charity organization. Our mission is to serve the business community, and we believe a vital and strong business community serves the other charitable organizations. I've worked with a lot of the organizations that were in this room. In fact, some four and five-year-olds at the Goddard School were thrilled to put together a coats, cans, and coins drive. And I was able to take the cans and the coins over to the welcome house and the coats over to the chamber, and they got a big kick out of it. I think all businesses are proud to do that kind of work. During our busy season, the numbers I have is that we're taking approximately 10 phone calls a day and seeing 20 to 30 people for walk-in traffic that we're sending around town. For website stuff, which is what a lot of people are doing before they come here, I have a breakdown by most referred member categories. Our top three are restaurants, retail, and then accommodations. And since February 1st, 2012 through today, we received 8,000 views for the restaurant category listing, 3,200 for retail, and 3,200 for accommodations. And that's through our online product called Web Link, which is not only looking at things coming through our website, but people that are doing Google searches, it ties in all of their individual pages to it. So just to double check, to make sure that they're not seeing anything that's skewed, I looked for a Google Analytics search on our webpage, and this is, I think, for the last month, it received 10,431 page views. Chamber of Commerce tends to be the place where people go to get information about an area. And we're proud to send them to our members and throughout the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was also stated, I believe, at the last town council meeting that you had a large amount of money, I don't know if it was quoted as $214,000, and I think that was showing up somewhere, but it was basically the building. I don't know if you wanted to speak on...
I had heard that. I looked at the 990s, and the 990s show net assets of 188,000. This is the one that I just authorized to be signed, ending fiscal year 1031, 2011, which are marked 2010. I don't know why. But the 188,000 is basically the net, if you take the value of the building and subtract the mortgage on the building. The building was valued, according to these tax returns based on the original depreciation, at 540,000. The town values it at 451,000. So that basically eliminates about half of that net asset value. And the rest you can certainly go through. It's in the 990s, cash on hand, any investment accounts, those kind of things. But when you take a look at the overall situation for the chamber, we have showing revenues minus expenses, a net loss last year of $19,532. Now, that's not all real money. Approximately 21,000 is depreciation. So if you take the depreciation out, we made about $2,000 last year. So it's an organization, you know, of approximately $200,000 in revenue that's coming in pretty close to a balanced budget. So I wouldn't characterize it as a fortress that we're socking away money in the bank. But the 990s are available for people to review, and they've certainly decided to interpret some things that may be a little bit different than is the reality. And then, of course, is the building really worth 451,000? You know, Dick Pike talked to that last time about it was a building built on what was originally an unbuildable lot.
Further questions here at the table?
Can I just ask, do you have that documentation in the office too? The phone calls, the logins, the views? That's maybe in the... I'll swing by and pick it up.
I can give that to you now.
Oh, that'd be great. Save me some gas money. It's expensive to get that.
So this would be our most referred member categories numbered 1 through 146.
Other copies for all of us?
You might want to give it to the...
Right.
Well, if everybody else doesn't want it, I'm interested in it, but the rest of the council...
No, we'd all like it.
We all, we all need it. Yeah. Thank you.
I heard that. You'd appreciate that. I didn't say it.
Any other questions for me?
Any further questions here at the table? All right. Thank you. I don't know if there'll be documentational questions later, but...
That's fine.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Back to you, Steve.
Okay, if we can run through the other agencies, the next agency is the Peasdale Neighborhood Revitalization, and I'm sure Leslie is still with us.
Still with you. It'll be fast. Leslie Schwannad, President of Peasdale Neighborhood Revitalization. Oh, Andy's out of the room, and that's too bad because I was just going to praise him. He has been really the linchpin of the organization. He and, I have to compliment the town. Even though we're not getting big bucks, we certainly get a lot of in-kind help from the town. And I would say, from Andy, from Vin Murray, I'm now working with Ray Nickerson because we are applying for the CDBG grant for a shelter, a bus shelter that would be very architectural and artistic. And Vin has been working with us on that. We also are applying through this, and I don't know that we'll get it, historical walking tour of Peasdale that we're looking for money for through this grant. I've met recently with Rhode Island Foundation. I always pick people that live down here who aren't on the Rhode Island Foundation. And so I met with Jennifer Pereira the other day because she lives down here to see what monies we could get. I just praised you, you just left the room. My right-hand person here. And I've just met also, just to see what they were doing, the other day I met with House of Hope, and Jean Johnson lives down here. So I've done a little bit of brain picking. We did get a grant, a small grant from Bank of Newport. And again, we're seeking a lot of money. We have been partnering with a lot of different people in the community. Eric Thunberg, who has Palisade Mills, has graciously lent his little pocket, his little piece of land on Railroad Street. Nancy Dean, who was on our board, who's not on our board now, but she got a lot of donations for plantings there. And we've worked with Peggy Binns because she had some monies, or she was working with the Snyder Electric, who in turn worked with us, and they gave us a whole bunch of mulch this fall and help to do the rotary and to do other things in Peasdale. So we are, we are working, partnering with them. If you've looked at the kiosk on the bike path, you'll see that we have Herod doing the little, they have little art projects. We call it the smallest museum, art museum in town, but they're doing stuff for us. We did buy new lights for our holiday tree, which is probably the best tree, let's face it, in Rhode Island. So, and let's see, what else are we doing? We do...
Probably.
It is, it is the best tree in Rhode Island.
Like you, Leslie.
It is the best tree in Rhode Island. We did buy new lights for that. And of course, the guys who decorate that, they're all volunteers. It's Gary Briarty, and it's Dave Nickerson, and it's Bob Fasaro. They're the guys that decorate that every year. Let's see, what else? We do work closely with the rec department. Terry's been great to work with, so we have been working with... Oh, and then in April, and I don't have the dates yet, we are bringing all the nonprofits together. We're acting like a liaison, and we're going to bring nonprofits together so that everybody knows what everybody else is doing and nobody is reinventing the wheel. We do have a website, which we've had for a while, and it's peasdale.net. And we still use our promotional film, which is on the website, and which we do send out for funding sources too. We do send out the half, I think it's five and a half minute promotional film. So we are doing, excuse me, we are doing that. And, oh, and we also have an adopt a spot program in Peasdale that Bob Don Francesco runs, and we're asking different businesses, and they have, to adopt a spot in Peasdale to take care of. And I am now currently working with some of the businesses, some other businesses in Peasdale. I have some meetings with them just to see if they can help fund us a little bit. And again, I think that's it. But again, I have to praise the town, Andy and Vin and John Shock, if I call him, Rex Ebelly, if I call them, to pick up a mattress that was left in the parking lot, and they're right there. So I can't, even though we're not getting tons of money, we're getting a lot of in-kind support, and I appreciate that. So thank you. That's it. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Leslie, Jim?
Leslie, I know we lost Twisted Throttle over at the Palisades, but Palisades is really looking great, and they've got some new businesses in there. Any word from some of the local restaurants, upholstery, you know, seamstresses, whether some businesses coming in that is helping downtown Peasdale from the Palisades?
You know, I don't know that offhand. I know that there's a new owner of Sweet Cakes, and he's doing pretty well with that. But I don't know if they've been affected one way or the other. I will hopefully in the next couple of weeks, because I am going to be sitting down with some of the businesses, but Eric's been great. I am bringing in some other businessmen because I don't have that business background. I was an educator, not a businessperson. So I am bringing in some other businesses so that we can talk and figure out what we're going to do, so. So I can't really answer your question, Jim, but if you go down downtown Peasdale in the afternoon or in the mornings, it's pretty lively, and that's what we're hoping for.
That's what you want.
That's what I want. Want more money too, but we're trying, we're trying. Thank you.
Kathy?
I hear you that you want more money there, Leslie. And I have to compliment you. Peasdale since that revitalization group and really, it's just been absolutely phenomenal.
Thanks, Karen.
I know those CDBG grants have certainly helped in refacing a lot of the different buildings. But the other work that you've done down there, Leslie, I really, really commend you on the work that you've done.
Well, thanks, Karen.
And the work in improving the businesses down there, it really is...
Well, you know, what we're trying, there are only about, you know, we sound like we're this big organization, about five of us doing it. But my next goal, we are a 501(c) three, and that took us a while. My next goal in talking with these agencies is at least trying to get somebody part-time because we're all volunteers and that doesn't always work. So get somebody part-time and get a donated space too. So that's what I'm looking at next. That's my next goal, so we'll see. So thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you for all that you do.
The Downtown Merchants Association receives the same large contribution as the Peasdale Neighborhood Revitalization, $1,000. The dollars that downtown merchants are using is for the outdoor summer and fall street festivals, you know, as an effort to entice more business into the area and to provide greater pedestrian activities within the district itself. That organization too, like Leslie's, has been very, very active in the last couple of years. In fact, their monthly meetings are attracting, in some cases, over 20 people. And they are planning in advance of each of the seasons and are providing, you know, different activities to be able to promote their area. So the $1,000 there is a general contribution for that agency. If there's no questions, next agency is the Washington County Regional Planning Council. We have recommended level funding for that agency at the $2,500 level. I would note that the agency has requested funding of, I believe, $7,000, I'm sorry, $4,000 for the, $6,000, we offered 2,500. And that was to maintain the level funding that we had provided over the past three years. So the amount is in at 2,500. I think council's familiar with the organization and has participated in the various sessions that they've held. Their major activity is focused on economic development, water resources, land use, and affordable housing. I think council's aware, they've been dealing in affordable housing areas, they've been dealing in the energy conservation areas. And also provide a monthly forum for council representatives to get together to discuss issues that are, issues that are ongoing in each of the several communities that are represented at the table. The last agency that's recommended for funding is Washington County Community Development Corp. This agency deals exclusively with redevelopment of affordable units and enhancement of affordable units. I think council will recall, last year, they were responsible for the rehab of a foreclosed unit in Green Hill, and they're currently working on a second unit on Sunset Boulevard off of Wardens Pond for a second unit. As these units are rehabbed and brought back into the housing mix, they're part of the affordable housing units that are recognized by the state in our percentage of total housing units. That's Jeff Marshon's group, and they continue to be effective in terms of dealing in this community. There are also recipients on CDBG grants. That's one of the ways that they get the rehab money necessary to be able to go after the foreclosed units in terms of dealing with the banks. If there's no questions, that finishes the municipal boards and outside agencies. Overall funding request was for the $17,850, of which we recommended the 10,850. That $7,000 is the additional request that's come in from the chamber subsequent to the publishing of my budget document. If there's no questions, we should move on to the public safety component of the budget. That starts on narrative page 22 and GF page 11. So if you would go to... So if you would go to Narrative 22. Ben and Jackie, you want to come up, up front?
What is the GF?
I don't know.
Yeah, 11.
GF 11 and, and what?
22.
Sorry.
11.
The police department budget for the 2012, 2013 year is up $88,593. More than half of that, or $42,300, is directly related to personnel services. The police department currently has 52 sworn members, inclusive of the chief, eight dispatches, 10 civilians. So with an 80-person department with 52 sworn, we also provide one police officer that acts as a school resource officer. This is something that has been in place now for several years. I will say that for the first time since that program's initiation, we will be changing resource officers where our existing resource officer has, has elected to move out of the program. So we are currently reviewing department applicants, and the school department will be involved with us with that final selection. I wanted to point out on page 23 of the Narrative, provide you with some of the call detail that the department goes through. We're talking about call frequency of about 35,500 calls for service a year. The splits on that, about 33,500 are for police-related calls. Some of them are redundant, where you're calling for service for both EMS and for police, or EMS, police, and fire, but fire calls are about 3,700. We're also looking at about 1,100 accidents a year that, that are investigated by the department, about 200 of those that have resulted in, in injuries to the occupants. The number of arrests continue to stay around the 600 persons arrested, or about one and three-quarters per, per day. Driving under the influence, we've still got about 80 of those cases brought per year, and that's up from about 75 in the 10-11 year. The, as I mentioned, with the SRO officer, we've got about half of a, three-quarters of that officer, it's full-time during the, during the school year, working out of the high school. And one of the reasons that that office has been effective for us is that there are in excess of 250 calls a year in terms of calls and services at the high school to deal with various issues. Some of those initiated by the SRO, but a great deal of information is conveyed through the SRO and, and the administration to be able to provide for a, a proper and safe environment for, for the student population. There are no new programs that are proposed with the department. One thing I would also mention is that as far as the revenue structure is concerned, while the department is costing us $5.3 million, we'll be taking in revenues of approximately $204,000. The lion's share of that is made up in the rental of police cars. This is where construction companies have sentary duty requirements and traffic control. The police vehicle goes with the officer, and it is used on those work sites. We're expecting that that will generate about $85,000 in the 2012, 2013 year. So if you ever get questions on why are there so many police cars at the police station that are sitting there, several of those are for hire. And during the current year, those police vehicles will generate about 100 and, I believe, about $175,000, $180,000. Obviously, that's because we had such a major job going with the construction on, on Route 1 this year. But as we go forward, if the 138 project starts next year, we will also see additional demand on, on, on that service requirements. Council will recall, we put the fee up on that last year, I believe, what are we charging now?
35.
35 an hour, and we're looking that there may be a need to increase that based on what the operating costs are with fuel in the upcoming fiscal year. What we want to do is to review what the going rates are with the state police, as well as the neighboring communities. Are there questions as far as the, the overall police budget? When we look at the department, you know, some of the standout accounts are the accounts associated with the fuels, where we're looking at fuels up about $28,000 over what the current year. And that's based on Jackie's estimates, based on no more mileage being incurred, but based on what the, what the projected cost is per gallon on the fuel. And in fact, when we looked at the fuel cost, we were using a figure of $3.0-
35 cents.
35 cents. We're probably going to be low on that to begin with. Plus, we're also going to be seeing a transitioning on police vehicles because the Crown Vics are no longer going to be made, so we're going to have to look at Ford's new entry in the market will be the Taurus or the Chevrolet with the, with the Impalas or the Chrysler with the, with the Chargers.
The Chargers, yeah.
So we have always found that the, that the, that the Grand Fury or the, those have been the police vehicle, they have been the workhorse and have had the least amount of maintenance associated with them. The Chargers that we've had have not been as effective in terms of the wear and tear. We still use the vehicles up to 90,000 miles under proper conditions. We attempt to get rid of the vehicles at around 85,000, or based on, based on the maintenance efforts, over 75,000. So I think that we've been quite efficient in terms of the, the vehicles that we've provided and the service that it's received through Public Works, but next year is going to be a question mark in terms of seeing how the new vehicles are going to work. Fortunately, we'll only be bringing in, I believe, four to the line in the first year, so we'll have some experience before we see where we go in the future. There really are no other major increases. We're seeing an $11,000 increase on the vehicles, but that's simply based on the fact that that four-line vehicles in one, one on Mark that would be replaced next year, and the estimated cost is about $111,000.
Now, Steve, you just mentioned DUI drunk driving arrests. You know, I'd just like to point out that we have a excellent, excellent record on drunk driving arrests and convictions. I did a three-year review before I came here tonight, anticipation that this might, might come up. And in the year 2009, we made 103 drunk driving arrests plus 67 refusals. In 2010, we made 79 drunk driving arrests with 56 additional refusals to take the, to take the test. And then in 2011, we made 78 drunk driving arrests with 50 refusals. For a total for those three years, if you added up the drunk driving and the refusals, there's 433 arrests, and that's a really a great number when you consider that each drunk driving stop, whether they consent to a test or refuse it, takes the minimum of two hours for a police officer to bring the suspect off the road and go through the process, minimum of two hours. So our department's always been a leader in drunk driving arrests, and I'm kind of proud of that number, because our main, our main focus is to keep our highway safe, to reduce the conage out there, so.
Can I ask?
Other than that, certainly-
Carol?
Chief, so when you say 80 driving under the influence arrests, that doesn't include the refusals? Or does it?
No, this is in addition to refusals.
Oh, so it's-
Yes.
How many refusals?
For a three-year period-
For this year, we're saying 80.
For a three-year period, we've had 173 refusals, and the other side of the coin, we've had 260 drunk driving arrests, actually charged the driver with operating under the influence of alcohol or drugs.
And sometimes you charge both-
Sometimes.
-with a refusal.
Yeah, sometimes, yeah. And usually, as, as you're well aware, during the plea bargaining process-
Right.
-a driver will most likely want to plead to refusal because it's a civil violation-
Right.
...as opposed to drunk driving, which is a criminal violation.
Exactly.
And the courts accept these, these plea bargains, and, you know, we, we have little control over it.
Right.
Ellen?
Jim?
The, the trend sounded like it was going in the right direction. Did you read me the three years from, on the arrests, in the hundreds down to the 90s and 80s? Was that the correct trend?
No, that just, this is just the past three years, I reviewed it. We can, we can go back further if you like.
Oh, no, no, but, but just, just give me the last three years again. Start with '09 and just, I mean, it sounded like the trend was right, like maybe-
2009, we made 103 drunk driving arrests, and we charged those, those drivers defendants with, with drunk driving.
Okay.
That same year, we had 67 additional refusals.
All right. 103 and 67. How about the next year?
Following year was 79 drunk driving arrests with 56 refusals.
I mean, it sounds like it's going in the right direction, so maybe, maybe we could pat ourselves on the back with-
Yeah, yeah. Look at the numbers that way, sure.
Yeah, yeah. And the other question I had, if there's detail work on off-duty officers, so is there a package with the police car? We talked about the rental and the officer.
Oh, the officer's paid separately from the 35 dollars.
All right, and so what are the officers?
Four-dollar minimum, four-dollar minimum, four-hour minimum.
Okay, okay. And how much per hour, or how much for the four hours?
How much?
For an officer for four hours?
Well, it's time and a half their rate.
All right, can you give me an average then?
Jim, it's set by contract. I think it's around $35 for a sworn officer. The special detail officers get a little less than that.
Okay.
But it's around that. It depends if it's a, a school project, they get a little less than that, and it depends on if it's a highway project, that type of thing.
And town details are cheap, are paid at a lesser rate.
One thing I would like to add is some of the money that's going towards this is from grant funding, so we're getting highway safety grants to help us focus on these efforts.
Carol?
Chief, the, the SRO officer at the high school, 250 calls, does that seem high? Is that, is that high or low?
I think it's, no, I don't think it's high. I think it's pretty average. I mean, he's, he's involved in the daily activities of students. Some of, some of the calls he initiates himself-
Right.
-is by being there. You know, he will take action when he sees violations, and that constitutes a call.
And that doesn't necessarily mean criminal activity for these calls, right?
And we just interviewed, Tom Maja mentioned the SRO being replaced this year at his own request. He's done a wonderful job, I think you know that, and he's going to be sadly missed over there, but I applaud him for wanting to expand, you know, his horizons and go back on the road and, but just yesterday, we had interviews for that position. Several of our, of our offices are interested in it. We had interviews yesterday. I'm waiting for a recommendation from the panel, which included, included the principal and the superintendent's office. I don't know if she was there personally. So we will replace Monte with, with somebody who wants the job, because, you know, we've, I'm not assigning somebody to that job because it takes a special person to, to do it, but we'll, we'll have a replacement.
Kathy?
And I think I saw on the news that that click it and ticket, I don't know if it's in phases that it comes out, but I think that it's starting back up again, so.
Did you see them last night?
I, I might have. I, I know, I just recently saw it.
We had a detail last night at Dale Collyer Corners, and it was a statewide program where, here again, working off a grant, we had five officers out at Dale Collyer Corners last night, standing around 6 o'clock, stopping cars where the drivers didn't have their seat belts or harness on. There were 23 persons who were cited for that violation, but this is, this is a, actually a statewide, if not national endeavor to, to get people to wear seat belts. So here we are.
Yeah. Actually, I saw it in the, in the regular news. I didn't see it last night at 6:30, I, I was here.
I kind of thought somebody would see it and be questioned on it.
But I figure it's out and about, so to kind of let people know to, to click it or ticket. And I was also wondering about the cell phones, not cell phones per se calling, because that still is legal, but the texting, if that's been something that we've picked up.
It's-
It's difficult, I'm sure, to probably-
It is so, obviously, you don't, you don't have to be a cop to figure this out, it's so dangerous.
Oh, absolutely.
It is so dangerous. It's just foolish for anybody to text while they're driving.
I was wondering if-
I don't know why, you know, I'm, I'm a proponent of completely banning cell phones-
I'm sure you are.
-as well as texting. I mean, it's just so dangerous. The major cause of accidents is not speed, it's inattention. And what would draw your attention any more than texting or on a cell phone while you're driving? It's just, it's foolish.
Since I'm on the road all day long, I totally agree with you, Ben, and I try to pull over and use the cell phone in parking lots, and, but I see them swerving and swaying, and I, you can tell what they're doing.
You've got to take control of it. I've told my family, you know, whenever you get a call on that cell phone, you pull to the side of the road, if you have to have it on.
Chief, what do you think about the headphones or talking through the, you know how the cars have it now? You can talk right into the- Right into the car, I think, right? Don't they?
Yeah, but, yeah, well-
What do you think of that? Is that, does that relieve-
I think it's dangerous.
-any of the danger? No?
Dangerous. I have an old car, so I don't have it.
But I think that's what a lot of states are doing, you have to have the headphones, some of them are. Although I think Connecticut, you can't-
Can't do it at-
-have a phone at all, right?
No, I think, I think you're right. It's, there's a system, a satellite system that sends the-
Right.
-right into a car, yeah, well. Anything that's going to distract you from driving, obviously, is a danger.
Mm.
Really not rocket science.
No.
Chief, could you just talk about what are some of the punitive measures for somebody who's driving under the influence when they're charged? Community service, fines, loss of license?
Well, there's a, there's, there are different, different sanctions for first offense, second offense, and third offense. I mean, obviously, the first offense, you lose your license for three months, pay a fine, have to go to school.
10 hours community service?
If you were convicted of a first offense and you were arrested subsequently for a second offense, you're charged as a second offender, and therefore the sanctions escalate.
Just hoping that some of our youth is listening.
We're out there, these numbers show it.
I know. Other questions here at the table?
Thank you very much for your support. It's deeply appreciated.
I haven't approved anything yet.
I'll make-
Anticipate.
You're the public safety director, I'm making a pitch here.
Just because you were inducted into the Hall of Fame. Superscript guarantee.
Well, you know my answer to that. I still have to wash the windows.
That's right.
The chief is also responsible for the animal control road program. That road program provides about 1,325 to 1,350 complaints are handled each year. The budget for the road program is $67,617 for the 2012 year. It's only up $1,156 over the current year. The second part of the program, and Anne Marie's with us tonight, is the shelter, the animal shelter program. The animal shelter program provides regional sheltering for town of Daragh Anset and South Kingstown. The split as far as Daragh Anset, South Kingstown is about a 70-30 split as far as materials- materials. Anne Marie, why don't you come up? I'm sure people are gonna have questions on your new facility. The, over the last three years, over the last three years, we've had empowerments, and that's both of feline and canine, of about seventeen-hundred-and-twenty-eight units, and thirty percent of those are from Narragansett. It's important to note that with the budget for the next year, we're looking at a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar requirement to run the facility. However, we will be obtaining about sixty-six thousand and sixty-six dollars from the town of Narragansett as their thirty percent share. When we look at the thirty percent share, it isn't just the share of what the budget is, it's the share of what the overhead costs are, the cost of fringe benefits, as well as the depreciation associated with the new facility. So Narragansett is a full partner in terms of paying toll in our operation. I think it's also important to note that we also obtain donations of over twenty-five thousand dollars a year for services that are rendered, that are volunteered, not the fines, but rather donations that come in at the program. So with that, I open it up to Anne Marie to tell you about her new home.
Big.
Yes, it is.
It's definitely an improvement over what we've had previously. It allows our animals to be housed safely, which I find to be a very important factor in having a properly-run animal control facility. We are able to separate the dogs and the cats and decrease the stress level, which hopefully in turn will also help to keep them healthier, and I find that to be very important. I don't know if you guys have any questions. I know that some of you have visited, haven't you, Miss Polly? And she also adopted a cat this year.
Indeed.
And it's been a long road, and we've been working on it for quite a period of time. Since ninety-five, we've worked on raising the funds for it, and over the last couple of years, we've been working to construct it.
Questions? Polly first, please.
When I was there, I was surprised that it was not more crowded, surprised and delighted. I think you had moved in that day or the day before.
Just about.
Is it any more crowded now?
It's, right now, we're in a slower part of the season. We're coming to the end where, towards the winter part, people start calling us because they're starting to see the animals out in the cold. Now, we're going to start coming into the season where we're going to end up with more pregnant female cats, we're gonna end up with more kittens. So we kind of go into the slower part, the lull, you might say, and then we'll get into the boom of the population's gonna start coming in and hitting us.
Thank you. And I know, Anne Marie, and I looked at the facility, it still wasn't really finished. You were gonna do a fundraiser with the tree, with the...
Yep, we're working on that. I do have someone who is painting that, it's in the foyer, it's the Tree of Life. Looking at obtaining the right kind of dog tag, you might say, that individuals can engrave in honor of or in memory of a friend or an animal. And then we can flip everybody, you know, the tags on over, so we'll have a couple lined up just to show what it looks like, and then to be able to have it engraved on the other side and posted in honor or in memory of someone or a pet.
It's a nice, it's a win-win for the pet lover, and obviously for, you know...
I think so. And the painting services is being done by Veronica Thompson.
Oh, Veronica.
Who has volunteered to do that for us. So that is a gift from her to the animals and the general public.
She's a great lady.
Very nice.
And a big animal lover.
Yes, she is.
Great.
Further questions here for Anne Marie? Jim?
Steve, have we closed on the contractor, finalized?
We're at a punch list state at this point with the contractor. We're totally into the building, the old building. The construction really had to take two phases. One was the new building to be constructed, and then retrofit of the older area that used to be the shelter. So that, all of that work is completed at this point. We've got a couple of outstanding items that they have to complete, but nothing that interferes with the operation of the facility at this point. We will probably be dealing with the contractor and the architect as far as the final punch list being completed to our satisfaction over the next several weeks. Chief and I, Ann Jackie, as well as Anne Marie, have lived with this, you know, really over the last eighteen months. I take certain exceptions. Some comments that were made in a letter to the editor suggesting that this facility is lacking, because I think what our objective was, was to provide a facility that would provide adequate separation between the feline and the canine population, as well as to provide workspace to be able to protect those animals while they were in our care. We were not setting ourselves up to look like a home away from home. We were setting ourselves up to be an animal shelter, to properly protect and house those animals in our possession, and to be able to provide necessary medical care if necessary. We do have proper facilities there as far as the day room for people to be able to meet and greet animals in a comfortable environment. So I'm somewhat surprised and disappointed in those type of comments, and I think that once we have the open house, which should be sometime in April, it will allay any fears that people had. Would we have liked to have had true divided light? I think that the question would be, should a municipality be spending those type of dollars on that type of a facility? Or should the community be making efficient use of the dollars and ensuring that the, that the goal of the organization is proper protection of the animals while in our custody? So I, you know, I was disappointed in that type of comment, but then again, you're never gonna satisfy a hundred percent of the people.
Can I say something in relation to that? Having a municipal shelter, I think disease control and safety is a priority. To have a facility that has what a lot of facilities may call a healthy cat room or something like that, is not something that a municipal animal shelter should focus on. In most cases, the animals at our facility, the average length of stay is anywhere from two to three weeks. Sometimes maybe you might have someone there longer, like a mom cat with a litter of kittens. That may be eight to ten weeks. But an animal is not at our facility long enough to warrant a healthy cat room or a communal dog area. There's too high of a risk of disease spreading from one animal to the other. It increases the chance of maybe like cat fights, which would increase the chance of abscesses, a potential possibility of the spread of feline AIDS or feline leukemia or feline infectious peritonitis. Those are diseases that you have no cure for. It's not worth the risk. So when we looked at this facility and we looked at constructing this facility, that was a primary concern, disinfection, cleanliness, and the safety of the animals. We made sure that we were able to obtain very high-quality cat cages, which were stainless steel, which are the best that we can disinfect. In the kennel area, we worked very hard, that the cement floors had radiant floors, to maintain the warmth of the animals by being on cement. So I find that the main concerns that I had for the animals in our care were very well addressed. We also created a treatment room, and then in the treatment room, we could handle wounds or draw blood or anything like that without being in the public eye or having an animal control officer or a member of our general public walking in with a dog or a cat while we're working on it, which may cause an altercation between two different animals, thus injuring the animals or ourselves or the general public. So I think our important matters were addressed when looking to building and creating this facility, and I think that was accomplished.
I think one of the other things that's important to mention is that some of our animals are in quarantine up to six months. Now, if we have an animal that's in town that gets bit by a rabid raccoon, we can have that animal for having, for a six-month term to be able to ensure that that animal is, has not been infected. We have to have within our facility the ability to have controls to ensure that that animal's not in direct contact with any of the other animals. So I guess the mission that we're trying to accomplish, I think, is well-accomplished with what was designed and developed. And I'm not sure what, what we could have done differently to provide an environment, if it was gonna be better for people and worse for the animals, that's not what we were looking to do.
No, we are a municipal animal shelter, and that's our priority. We are not like a daycare center, there's a difference. We're not a boarding facility, there's a difference. And that is something that we also have to realize that some people don't understand. And I know also, in comparison to the other facilities that were mentioned, we worked on a tight budget, and I think we did rather well with the budget that we had in providing for the animals that we will be housing.
Further questions here at the table? We appreciate all the work.
Okay, that gets us to the communications department. Communications department, as we talk about each year, really has two principal purposes. One is responsibility of the cable plant, which is over a hundred miles of cabling within the community. And second is the maintenance of the fire alarm system in all commercial buildings and apartments. Based on the fire code changes that have occurred, we're now responsible for the review of building plans, anything commercial or anything residential of more than four units, as well as the maintenance of the alarm systems. During the, during the last year, two thousand and ten, eleven, we had over two-hundred-and-forty-one commercial fire alarm activations where the department had to respond. They are available on a twenty-four-seven schedule. We're looking at a budget of a hundred, a budget for the two thousand and twelve, thirteen year, which is about seven-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars less than what it was in the current year at about two-hundred-and-seven, one-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand dollars. We have two full-time positions within this department and one part-time, one regular part-time employee, and we also have weekend assistance to help with the, with the night calls. The work schedule at this point really is becoming a great deal more office work than we would like to see, and inspection work on new constructions or renovations on the commercials or the residentials. Works hand-in-hand with the building official's office and with the union fire district, because we're dealing with the alarm component of the fire safety codes, life safety codes. We're dealing with the life safety codes with the union fire district as well as the safety codes as they relate to building. So if there's any questions, we can go over that. If not, we can move on to the radio services budget. Radio services budget provides on an annual basis of two thousand dollars that's used for professional services, for hiring a radio consultant on questions involving communications equipment. It may be developing specs or fixing existing hardware within the public safety complex. It also provides for communications equipment. Next year, we'll be looking at about two thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety dollars in purchases. For the most part, this relates to replacements of batteries and microphones that are used on the various radios, a couple of antennas. EMS department seems to be hotter on their equipment than the other departments in terms of the mics that they have to carry on their, on their person and the antennas that are there. Overall, we're looking at two thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety plus the two thousand on the consulting services for the radio services program, and that's down seventeen-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars. Reason it's down is there's less equipment purchases that are proposed and had been requested in the current year. The harbor master program, Barry's with us, Barry's continuing to run the program at the same cost as it was in the current, in the current year. We're continuing to operate this as a program that is public relations and safety. It's to deal with recreational boaters, to ensure that they can have a good time, but at the same time, they do it in a safe manner. The harbor master works in conjunction with students from URI that serve as assistant harbor masters. If you give a read to the narrative on the harbor program, you'll see that the marine program is a model that Barry's also providing training in terms of other municipal departments, as well as at the state police level and at the municipal training academy. The service hours are to have somebody on each and every day during the, during the summer months. It's a two-person operation whenever the boat is out. It works in conjunction with Narragansett, who has their own program. Barry, the things you need to bring forward? Like another yacht or a...
Do you want a yacht?
Any questions here at the table for Barry? Welcome.
Good evening. Great.
Well, I have a question.
Didn't you get, didn't you get a new outboard motor, Barry? How did that work out? Didn't you, weren't you looking for... Yeah, I'll ask you a question.
That's to go out to bid now.
Okay, all right.
We have to replace it before July.
Well, good luck with that then, Barry.
Thank you.
And how did you make out with changing the speed in the pond?
Very well, actually. I was trying to think of that. Very well. We did a concerted educational effort ahead of time, and then, like I said, we had our people out there until six o'clock at night, and I periodically went out early in the morning, and we had a lot of pamphlets out, and actually got probably seventy-five, eighty percent of it was positive feedback right from the start. As it was explained, everyone seemed to be happy with it and complying.
Great. All right. Any further questions?
Do you think we'll see a reduction on the pond activity with the price of gas? And maybe it'll be a lighter summer? What do you, just your thoughts on that?
No.
No, they still go out there and boat?
Well, they shifted about five years ago. When we first had the big increase, we saw a shift from tranchants from the pond to Block Island, where they started staying in the pond to conserve fuel. And actually, we saw an increase in the number of people remaining within the body of water. We're really not a destination port, but we are a, an origination port, but a lot of those people sort of said, well, we're not going quite as far, so...
Kind of tie up in the middle of the pond there, don't they?
They go right between the islands. You've seen, I've seen anywhere from twelve to thirty boats there tied up on a, on a nice weekend. And no problems with any of them, really. Mostly families and, you know, just having a good time.
Good. Any further questions? All right, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the fire company donations. The town makes a donation on an annual basis to each of the fire companies in town at a rate of four hundred dollars for each of the nine companies that are there. And the next account is the emergency medical services, and Mike DeMello is with us tonight. As far as the EMS division is concerned, we're looking at a budget for the twelve, thirteen year that's up twenty-three thousand, five hundred, or two-point-one percent to a million, one-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand. Of that million, one-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, we're taking in about five-hundred-thousand dollars in a revenue as an offset. These are the dollars that would be paid by insurances or Medicaid reimbursements for services rented by the department. The department really hasn't changed in size over the last several years. We have sixteen full-time paramedic grade, actually, we've got fourteen paramedics and two cardiac Cs at this point, I think, plus our EMS director and ten perdiems. Most of the perdiems are either at cardiac level or... Most of the perdiems are either at cardiac level or, uh, or, uh, paramedic level. The largest increase in the department costs, uh, projected again, like the police department, will be fuels and lubricants are up about $7,000. And we're also looking at, uh, increased medical materials and supplies of about, uh, about $1,000. There also is some equipment for the medical and lab equipment that'll be purchased, uh, for about $4,000. The personnel costs, well, uh, with the, we're looking at about a $9,800 increase in full-time salaries and overtime of $10,000. That's sort of a balancing act. We're not expecting to have all 100% of the 16 people on, uh, onboard through the year, so we know that we'll have the overtime as an offset, so that's where the $10,000 is going in. We're also reducing what we anticipate to be the cost of retirement based on personnel that are in place today. Having just given that as a general introduction, I wanted, uh, Mike to be able to address with you, uh, where he sees things going. He's done an excellent job in the short period he's been with us, and certainly has provided us with, uh, I think, good coordination at the state level in terms of dealing with EMA and, uh, dealing with, uh, the countless number of reports that have to be prepared in dealing with, uh, with the state agencies. And, uh, is responsible for, uh, dealing with, uh, putting together the vaccination program that, uh, that's going to be in place with the Health Department, and is also becoming a building manager in terms of figuring out how he's going to better serve the, uh, the needs over at the public safety, uh, public services building, because we really need to retrofit, retrofit that space. You've got it in the capital budget now for the last couple of years. Now we've got to get down to actually spending the money, we're getting the design work done to be able to, uh, better fit the garage, as well as the living space that's necessary over there. You may have to have Vespa help you. I mean, it only took him two years with a dog pound, so he may be able to help you on this one.
A little bus against you, huh?
Thank you. Again, um, I'll just echo what the manager said. Not much has changed in the, in the, uh, several years past. It's kind of stayed at that unique level for now, pending any, any large spike in call volume or need for additional services. The only efforts that I'm looking to, uh, move forward with is, is in, um, some of the EMA-type activities and to model the, or take after the fire prevention effort is a more proactive stance as, uh, public education and outreach, and to create better partnerships with a lot of the services that you heard, uh, here today. Um, and that's, that's really where the initiative is going, as well as maintaining the high level of service that we, we currently offer.
Mike, you want to address the number of calls and the type of calls that we're, we're getting? I mean, as far as the distribution on seniors versus, uh, regular population?
Sure. Um, as you would expect, the, the bulk of our services lie with the senior population. Unfortunately, over the past couple of weeks, we've had a lot of vehicular, um, things that have played into the account, but when you look at that as a percentage-wise, it's a very low percentage. Uh, the bulk of what we do are chronic problems, uh, people with, with, um, the need to be transported several times. Um, and that really is probably only going to increase as time goes on, as the population ages, as we look demographically throughout the country and throughout the world, uh, the, the population above the 65-year age is only increasing. Uh, so I, I would expect that that volume as time goes on and as, uh, with the pricing and the economy of today, as communities move from single families into, uh, multifamily-type environments, that that will probably, uh, impact and increase the call volume as we move forward.
Questions here at the table? Jim?
Where do the, um, do you cross the line with private ambulance companies and public? Where does that fall? Individual out there somewhere needs some help, do they call the municipality first? Or do you check to see if it has insurance? Do you go to private? Or do you take care of that?
Yep, that's, that's a good question, and it, and it's somewhat confusing at times. A lot of your medical facilities will have contracts, and in non-emergent cases, such as a lot of the nursing facilities, if the person doesn't need immediate care, they may call them first. Most of your residents are going to call 911, and we're going to go there and respond and just take care of the situation. And, uh, really, the insurance thing comes into play after. Uh, when you look at our numbers, uh, the majority of the population here is insured in one shape, way, shape or form, whether that be through Medicare, Medicaid, or private insurer. So we, we, uh, sit fairly well with that. However, we are also susceptible to the same cuts in issues with Medicare and Medicaid that a lot of the other services has mentioned. Uh, and that also plays a role in, in that reimbursement funding that we're trying to work on.
I understand if there's an emergency, suppose someone just simply needs dialysis treatment, a scheduled appointment, what, what happens then?
Yep, that's usually coordinated through their doctor's office, and the main reason for that is because if they, uh, the insurer may not pay if the physician doesn't sign off for it. So those routine services are typ, typically coordinated through their physician or, or some other private organization. Um, when, to, to call 911 for that, uh, though it may happen, a lot of times, it's, it's taken upon us to educate the people to say that there's a better use of service, or there's a better way for you to utilize the services rather than to do that. And we don't see that, quite frankly, all that often. But generally, it's, uh, if any citizen needs us, it's 911, and, and you'll get us.
I mean, our objective is that we're supposed to be there to provide emergency service only. So if it's a routine transport, it's not something that we're going to, uh, we're going to handle. We do have some discussions with, uh, with, with some places that are attempting to use the department for that purpose. Our concern is that while we may not be busy at the moment that somebody needs a routine, if we needed, uh, an emergency assist, we don't have the vehicle available. Again, as far as our workforce is concerned, we operate with one vehicle, it's 24/7. Second vehicle operates from, uh, from 7 to, uh, 7 to 7. And that's something that we have to look at in terms of whether that's the best coverage hours that we, we need in terms of the actual, uh, calls that are coming in. But, uh, the, the private ambulance services are there for the routine, and they should be used for that purpose only, and we've, we've got to keep our, our people available for the emergency, uh, services only. But trying to get the definition with some of the nursing homes is somewhat difficult.
Thank you.
Carol?
Mike, uh, when you get a 911 call, do, do you get accompanied by the police or the fire department? Do you do that?
Yeah, generally, the police come with us most of the time, and we'll call them off if we don't need them. Uh, and of course, if we do need additional resources, such as motor vehicle accidents and things like that, um, we will request the, the assistance of the fire department.
So it, it all gets dispatched through the police department, right?
That is correct. Yep. And I mean, we try to make an effort to, not to abuse the fire department, but to utilize them, um, and, and when necessary, and utilize their training and expertise when we need it.
Kathy?
Well, congratulations on that nice colorful access road you have across from the building on Route 1 now to get from 1 north and south.
That's Phase A.
I said, "Oh, that's kind of nice." I, I just noticed it the other day. Um, uh, the other question, I was going to say, the date on that vaccination for the, um, pertussis, or the whooping cough, um, and I had a question at the council meeting, and you, you might not know, or might not be aware of it. Um, I was just wondering if there's a, obviously, it was a group of kids, you know, that, that middle school age group that was, you know, seeing an issue in the Barrington area. Um, but I was just wondering offhand, if you were just, you might have just been passing out from the Department of Health, if you knew some of the older patients, not older patients, excuse me, because that, I'm talking about myself, um, the 40-year-olds who, like the titers might be wearing out, is there an issue with that, uh, certain population that might be better to go and get that, that we might want to try to let know that there's an issue?
Sure. Um, what they're recommending now essentially, and why we chose to do the, the clinic next Wednesday on the 21st from 4 to 7, um, at the high school, predominantly was for that reason, is there's a big misnomer that "I got that vaccination as a child, and I'm good," and that's not the case. So the T-DAP that'll be offered, which is the Tetanus Diptheria Pertussis, if you haven't had it in a while, or more than five, or less than five years, you might as well go get it. Um, it's at no cost to you, it's a partnership, and I felt, uh, we should take advantage of that. If the state's offering us something for free, we might as well take it. Uh, on the same token, while you're there, if you haven't gotten a flu shot, you may get that as well. So you could get both, or one or the other, if you've already received it.
And what time were you there again?
It's, uh, 4 to 7.
4 to 7, yeah. Yeah, and as I was saying, I, I think it's important, because a coworker of mine, just this past January, his daughter had, had it, and then he got it, and was out of work for three weeks. And I'm coming back, I mean, it was just absolutely exhausting, and he was actually cured, and the cough and spasms that he was having were just, you know, it just absolutely wear him out. And, uh, I, I can't, you know, emphasize enough, I sold vaccines in my past life of Glaxosmithkline, I'm very familiar with vaccine, vaccinations. Matter of fact, we make one of the DTAPS, I don't know if that one's the one you're using. Um, I hope so. Um, but it, it's very important to get, because it, I've, I've heard from, being in a pediatric office years ago, of a, a child having whooping cough, and it's just, it would just tear your heart out, the kid, just, and it can be deadly for the real infant.
And most of the, most of the stuff that's being vaccinated is, is highly contagious. So if you can prevent yourself from getting it, uh, you prevent yourself from handing it to somebody else.
Exactly, like my friend, my coworker's daughter, write to him, and, uh, so I, I really highly suggest people get there and get that vaccination, because unfortunately, there's a huge increase in that all over the country, and mumps are showing up, and, um, just the stuff that we didn't see before. So I appreciate that you're doing that, so thank you for that. And then I was just going to ask you one question, and tagging on to Jim's, um, because the company I work for now is, we are in with a, an ambulance company, we share space with the Stat Care up in Massachusetts, um, who's bought another company. So I was just wondering, what private, um, ambulance companies do we have here in the South Kingston area? I see some of them, like, maybe Universal, uh, just my own curiosity.
I mean, on a daily basis, the, uh, uh, majority of the providers that are licensed in the state are probably in and out of the town, um, either as a pass-through going to Westerly or Connecticut. South County Hospital, of course, probably has arrangements with multiple providers. In town, I know, uh, Alert Ambulance has a, uh, vehicle off of Main Street. Medtech Ambulance, uh, I know for a fact also has a, a location in town. Uh, I'm not aware of other, uh, organizations that have a, a location in town. However, y, you're right, you'll see them up and down Route 1 most of the day, uh, either empty or, or shipping out.
Right. Do, do they have a, a certain number? Do you know, uh, you might not know, I'm just wondering about?
Yeah, the phone numbers, yeah, they, um, we, we do have some of their contact information. Uh, the state of Rhode Island has a mutual aid plan that incorporates them at some point.
With Narragansett and Charleston.
Yeah.
I just was wondering about, you know, the numbers that were here in the town, and just, uh, just a point.
I would have, yeah, I would have to look, uh, most of them are 800 numbers.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Any further questions here at the table?
Thank you.
Thank you. Keeping all of our residents safe.
Yeah, I wanted to thank Jackie for coming in tonight.
Mike, at the, uh, at the clinic, when they give the needles, you've got a square needle for, uh, for the town manager.
Okay, uh, we are through public safety, we now need to move on to benefits. That'll start on page N42 and on, uh, GF25.
Thanks, thanks, Chief. Thanks, Jack.
Thanks, Chief.
Barry and Mike and?
Well, thank you. Please have to, I know.
I'm going to tape it.
Thanks.
Okay, starting out with municipal insurance account 1410, and that's on page 42 and on page G25. We're looking at a budget of $220,000 for the municipal insurance. This includes property and liability, as well as the excess, uh, liability. The basic policy of the town is a million dollars in liability. We buy a $4 million excess coverage, so it's a $5 million program. The, uh, the trust has not had, uh, good experience over the past two years, and has had to hold back issuing dividends for the 2012-2013 year. That means that the, about $17,000 in credit that we had seen in the past couple of years won't be there as a credit this year against the expense. Also, what we're seeing is increased costs associated with the, uh, value of, uh, the reinsurance that the trust has to buy. Property and liability, uh, costs have skyrocketed based on some of the property claims that have occurred. The other thing that's occurred in the past year is that there's been a, a new property, uh, model that's been set up, and anything that's anywhere close to the coast, which obviously Rhode Island is, uh, is seeing, uh, very, very high rates as far as renewals. So what we're looking at, at the 220, is about a $24,000 increase over the current year. If there's no questions, we'll move on to unemployment. Unemployment insurance is paid, uh, we're expecting a $35,000, uh, estimated expenditure for the year, which is the same amount. This is a, an account that it's a placeholder. Unemployment at the municipal level, we do not pay like a private employer. A private employer pays a percent of salary into the unemployment insurance, uh, program. Municipalities do not. Municipalities pay on a dollar-for-dollar basis, based on the cost incurred, uh, and paid out to, uh, to persons that are no longer employed by the town. So, uh, at this point, we're expecting, based on the length of time that somebody can collect, that, uh, costs could, uh, could be in the era of $35,000. It could hit $70,000, and it may hit $10,000. It just depends on what type of market conditions we run into as far as employees leaving the service of the town that may be eligible for unemployment benefit, uh, collection. I'll be candid with you, we have, uh, seen claims for unemployment go through, that we just have appealed and still not been able to, uh, to get the state to agree that, uh, that this person isn't entitled to the benefits. So we are, uh, concerned with this account, but, uh, it's not one that we're going to have control over, because it really goes through the Administrative Procedures Program at the Department of Labor and Training. Life insurance, uh, account 1430, we're expecting about a $600 decrease in costs. All our life insurance, uh, based on, uh, is, is through the insurance trust. This is the last year of a engagement the trust has with, uh, with a life insurance company, where the rates were, uh, were, were very favorable. Hopefully, those renewals will not see major increases in the 13-14 year. When we look at the Social Security account for 1510, 1510 Social Security, I think folks are aware, Social Security is 6.2% of salary, and that's not just full-time salary, that's any salaries that are paid, uh, full-time, part-time, uh, and with a limit of up to $110,000 in income. In addition to the 6.2%, you pay 1.45% to get to this, to an effective rate of 7.665 on all salaries. So this number is a takeoff on the number of what we have for full-time and, uh, and sal, what we have for, for personnel costs, that would be subject to, uh, to FICA contribution. That number is $824,500 or $11,500 more than what the current year, uh, program is. The municipal retirement, uh, system, we now, uh, break out the, uh, the program in the, uh, in the account detail based on each of the employment groups, municipal employees, police retirees, EMS, because each of those have a different, uh, cost contribution associated with them. We've talked about that. On page 43, we give you what the cost, uh, percentages are. For the police next year, we will be paying 14.79% of salary. For the EMS, 2.74%. And for, uh, municipals, 11.41%. We're expecting the overall cost of the program for MERS to be approximately $1,070,000. The remaining dollars that are there pay for two different, uh, program elements. One is the, uh, a direct retirement. We have only one employee that left the town service that was not a member of the MERS system that was entitled to a direct retirement benefit. That person, uh, is, uh, passed, yet, uh, his spouse is still collecting. The estimated cost for the next year would be about $74, $7,480. There's also dollars that, uh, are necessary to pay for deferred compensation for, uh, two employees. So that works out to a $100,000 increase. I think it's also important to note that the, uh, that the town's MERS systems are well over 91% funded at this point. Unfunded liability is less than 9%. I believe the number is about $5 million. As I mentioned last night at the school budget hearing, I think that it's important to know that these numbers are reflective of full approval, which will end up being a court decision, of the changes that were made by the General Assembly last November. If we do not see approval of all of those, or them being ruled legal, we are going to see additional liability exposures that will come forward in the future years. Again, we're concerned that we've got money as of July 1st with the start of this fiscal year that'll be going into a defined contribution plan, which is irrevocable trust, which means that even if the courts were to overrule what the General Assembly's actions were in November, we would not be able to pull those dollars out. It would also mean that if there was benefits that allegedly accrued during the time between July 1st and the time that the court makes decision on it, that would be additional financial exposure that the municipality may have. Healthcare, the healthcare program, account 1530, we're expecting an appropriation of $3,43,929, or it's up about $22,000 over the current year, which works out to be, I think, a .3% increase. The narrative on page 44 does provide a history as to the different program changes that we have made over the past several years. It also references what the co-pay requirements are for the municipal unions and the non-organized. Essentially, what we're looking at is that all employee groups will be at a 15% or higher rate of contribution as of the start of the July 2012-13 fiscal year. The only one which isn't set at this point is the NEA. We've budgeted at a 15% estimated rate. That's still subject to the contract that has not been concluded as of yet, that goes back to July of 2009. But the overall contributions, again, the new detail that's presented in the budget shows you by active employees as well as retirees. One of the important things to show with the retirees is that the medical insurance for retirees is shown at $592,000. When we deal with our OPEB requirements, OPEB requirements for next year is $822,000. You take the 592, and you, or 552 is what we had anticipated, when we put the budget together, we budgeted 592, we have to also budget approximately $270,000 for OPEB purposes, so that we're meeting all of our, 100% of the OPEB requirements. OPEB was 822, and we'll have all 822 that will be going as a transfer from the healthcare insurance account into the healthcare reserve, and then into the OPEB trust fund. And when I say a trust fund, recognize that anything that we hold in OPEB is in a trust fund, which is an irrevocable trust, which means that the, no one can touch that money other than for the purposes in which they've been transferred. We do operate with a health, a healthcare, healthcare fund, and that healthcare reserve fund is used if they're, because we are on a cost-plus basis, if we were to overspend in any given year, we would need an asset base available to be able to pay those over, the amounts that were in excess of what the appropriation was. At this point, that healthcare reserve fund has, from municipal contributions, I think it was approximately $2.1 million, and a similar amount for school purposes, which is a proper amount of dollars to be held in reserve were there to be excess medical costs. And that's why we are comfortable with only needing a $22,000 increase in the 12-13 year. I do want to say, too, that a great deal of the cost controls that are in place on healthcare are directly related to what Allen's been able to provide, not just on the municipal side, but on the school side as well, in terms of the monthly cost controls, reviewing each of the accounts, reviewing that we're being properly billed, and that we're being properly credited, so that we know that what our costs are. We're not just taking the numbers that are given to us, but they're being evaluated on a monthly basis. I think in the long run, that's saving both the municipal and the school budgets considerable dollars. Certainly, over the past 12 months, we've had very good experience where there's been less claims than we had seen in the prior 18-month period. But again, that's gonna be something that's gonna go up and down with 750 or 780 insured lives.
Between town and school.
Between the town and the school. It's statistically valid in terms of looking at being able to have a cost-plus system in place. We're also a member of the West Bay Collaborative, which has membership of about 7,000?
9,000.
9,000 employees, members. And when you multiply that out based on the family memberships that are there.
About 24,000.
About 24,000 people are being insured through that program. So we've got the stability that we need, and when people talk about the need to consolidate or to regionalize, when you deal with your healthcare program, you deal with your municipal insurance programs, these are really statewide, regional setups that are providing good savings to the municipalities. You know, another one is the electricity that we buy with all of the cities and towns. So a lot of that's lost on the general population when they start saying, well, gee, we need to do things differently. We are doing things differently, and in fact, on most of these programs, staff within the town of South Kingston serves as resource to be able to make these things occur. Moving on, workers' comp, we're expecting that the dividends will stay in the workers' comp program. And workers' comp, we're looking at $125,000, which is the same budgeted amount as we had in the current year. The school transfer, we went over last night. If we move on to page N47, that shows the school debt service. I think we've spent a lot of time on debt service when we went through the capital budget. Effectively, the school debt is down $518,000. One of the saving graces for us in terms of being able to maintain a projected zero increase on the tax rate, because we're seeing a substantial decline in what the tax effort is for the debt service. Same thing with the school, with the town debt on, that's referenced on page 48. We show you what each of the debt requirements are, as well as the revenue sources associated with those programs, and we're looking at a $1,220,000 payment during the 12-13 year. Capital budget has already been approved by the council. We have not recommended any revisions from what was adopted by the council at the end of January. And the final account is the fund contingency at $65,000. This account could range in the $100,000 range. We still feel that we can leave it at the 65, and we're comfortable with that. We've gone over, I think, the entire budget at this point. We went over the revenues the first night. We've gone over each of the operating accounts and the utility funds since then. If there's any questions or issues that we haven't dealt with, please bring them up now, so we can discuss them.
Any questions here at the table?
If not, what we'll do is, we've given you in your Thursday packet, a copy of the agenda for Monday night, which is really a summarization of the manager's proposed budget. I would suggest if there's any revisions that are going to be made Monday night, have those prepared, and we'll help you set the amendments that would be necessary to be considered by the council. That session is scheduled now for Monday at 5:00.
So what I'm gonna do at this point is open the mic for any comments from interested citizens, or any questions? Seeing none, any questions here? Oh, excuse me. We do have one.
I wasn't sure if anybody else in this crowd here was gonna wanna speak, so I didn't wanna jump right up. I guess I just wanna put on the record again, I did speak to this, whatever it was, some number of weeks ago. Just as a private citizen, you know, I see the value that the local Chamber of Commerce, you know, brings to this community. I thought they made a really good case for everything that they do, all the local businesses, everything that they do. And so, and I think it's been stated, a lot, you know, this is all coming from a political angle, really. So I hope that those who have brought forth this turmoil, you know, really feel like it's worth it to kind of raise this as an issue. And I guess I've just, I've heard over the years, the tax rate in some communities for the businesses is higher than it is on the residential. And, I don't know, yeah, maybe there's some credit to be given for that, but, you know, it's not, these businesses, I don't know that any of these businesses are making a killing. So, you know, I don't think, I hope nobody's doing backflips that the tax rate on the businesses is the same as the residential, 'cause to, you know, even think about raising that by a few dollars or whatever on them, they're not making a ton. I mean, look at them. I mean, Main Street looks great, and I know that, you know, the parking lots get traffic and all this, but it's all a struggle. So I hope that there's, people aren't under illusions about that. I'm just wondering on the CIP, has the fact that South Road Elementary School been brought back online, has that now been factored into the CIP? Does that need to be altered before the budget is adopted?
There's nothing that's been requested by the school department in the CIP that is associated with South Road School. What the school department said last night was that they had money that was set aside in the 2011-2012 year that would have been used for upgrades at Peastale that they would use in place at South Road. We have not seen any detail to that level as to how they would expend those dollars.
Okay. Yeah, I just, you know, I'm on the road all the time, driving around from one place to another, and, yeah, maybe that was the totally right decision. I know that decision wasn't made at this table, you know. But just driving by, and I was going down South Road, and I said, yeah, I'm gonna go look at the playground. It is a beautiful playground. But then I was like, okay, well, how would that work for three- and four-year-olds, you know? And so then I went to Hazard, and, you know, anybody that looks at the two playgrounds, it's a totally different scale. So again, it may be totally appropriate, I'm not sure. I'm not sure that I really heard that talked about. But, you know, I hope that that's been considered. And, you know, I just know that over the years, we've seen these changes, and then there's, you know, the oops, oh, you know, I didn't think about that, you know? I think about recess, that was supposed to be provided at, you know, for the fifth grade is at Broad Rock, you know, oh, oops, I guess we didn't think about that, the community wanted that. So I hope that this playground is acceptable and very workable for the three- and four-year-olds, and that we don't have an oops coming up. And just on the condition of buildings, you know, I know Wakefield School is gonna have windows coming up at some point. I think West Kingston and Matunick have issues with the heating plant or the electrical service, I'm not sure which. And I'm not sure if those have roof issues coming up or not. But I know that South Road is the sister school to Wakefield, so I'm thinking that if Wakefield's gonna need windows at some point, that South Road, you know, reason, it would reason that South Road is gonna need those windows. So, you know, I guess, I just hope that these things have been considered. If they have been, I can't follow the logic of it, because, you know, I go to these meetings and I listen to the discussions, January it's not brought up at all, and then all of a sudden in February, it's something totally different. All right, so just a piece I just wanna touch on, you know, this is a question, I don't know if there's been, there's been some decorum talk, and I don't know if that meeting has happened where you're, you know, talking about how things are conducted, but I did notice at last night's meeting that there was a number of school committee members, you know, it seemed like they were doing texting and a lot of playing with their phones and stuff, you know, while the presentations are going on, you know, including someone that doesn't have a good attend, record of even attending. So I hope that you'll review decorum, you know, maybe have that as a discussion. Is it appropriate for our elected officials to be texting, you know, looking like they're kind of playing around and kind of like passing time during our town meetings? And there's also been a fair amount of, you know, people making faces and a little bit of mumbling and stuff while other people are talking, and totally, totally inappropriate. And so I hope that that'll be discussed, too, so that we can get a little more decorum that maybe has lost, been lost recently. Thank you.
Other comments from the public?
My name is Brendan Fogarty from Wakefield, chairman of the South Kingston, excuse me, Democratic Town Committee. Just wanna point out, the previous speaker, I'm not sure he understands that the Chamber of Commerce is different from the individual businesses. The individual businesses do a great job, the chamber represents them, but it's separate. And the other thing I wanna say is, the word about this whole Chamber of Commerce thing, they withdrew their want of the tax abatement, but what's the rush? I don't understand what the rush is, that they were able to get a letter by, you know, mistake because Ms. Alfred wasn't in, it wasn't part of the package, but it was added, and it was rushed through, and now they speak tonight, and, you know, there's, the people in town need a chance to understand that they wanted one thing, it wasn't gonna be what they wanted, and now they want something else. And they haven't had a chance to respond to it. So I just want you to think about that. There's no need to rush. If they want the money, they get, they have all the way to the 30th to get signatures, to get a petition to add. But it seems like the council's gonna rush through this, and I think it's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fogarty.
Steve, I know that you addressed that Monday night with the letter. I don't know if you want to reiterate again that the letter came in in time to meet the agenda.
I think you've said it, the letter came in in time to meet the agenda.
Right, so there was no special consideration given, it was, treat it like any other letter that we received. Thank you.
Thank you. Just out of curiosity, Steve, you've been here a long time, how many times has it happened? Off the top of your head, I'm not asking you for an exact number, that a letter comes in, it's not in the packet, and the town council president asks for it to be added on, on a Friday morning? Just out of curiosity, how many times has it happened? I understand it's okay to happen, but how many times?
I have no idea. And I also can tell you that it's only one time that I have been out of an office because I've had a death in the family.
Steve, I apologize, and I'm sorry, but...
Brendan, this is inappropriate. I'm not gonna get involved in your discussion.
Totally inappropriate, Brendan, come on. This is, we did it all by the book. Steve Alfred does it by the book, please.
Just ask a simple question. A simple question.
It was implication.
All right, I'm gonna move on.
He was welcome. Welcome. I'm afraid, I don't know if we're done yet. Okay.
No, we're just taking...
Ella, would you throw them out? Ella, you've gotta throw them out of this room.
I'm gonna call a five-minute recess to this meeting, starting now.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I just wanna make a comment with...
I'm going to call a five-minute recess to this meeting, starting now.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I just want to make a comment with respect to a public meeting. It's a violation of law. It's considered disorderly conduct for any individual to disrupt a public meeting. So, with that word of caution, I'm going to ask everybody to act like ladies and gentlemen. This, everybody within the room, please.
Anyone would like to continue their comments at the podium?
I'm here to speak about the chamber's request. Again, in my opinion, taxpayer money, granting any taxpayer money to the chamber by some council members appears to be improper. I want to state that for the public record, that I feel that it is improper to do so. It is my understanding that according to what the town manager has said, and I just want to be clear, because I am a novice on this, is that anyone has the right, up until April 30th, to submit changes according to the charter process. That's what you said, right? I just want to make sure that I'm getting the signatures, and I'm going to, if this is what happens on Monday, I want to be clear on what I'm doing. So...
Yeah, but let me make sure you are clear on it. The requirement for the 25 signatures in the petition, those have to be filed by four o'clock on April 23rd. The council considers the adoption of the final budget on April 30th. But if there was a petition that they would be required to vote on, it would need to be filed with the town by April 23rd in the clerk's office at four o'clock.
Okay. So, I just think I need to state for the record that I am wondering, why is it that I would be going out and collecting the signatures, and the chamber does not have to do, follow the same process? I feel like as a citizen, I am going through an extra hurdle to have something possibly removed, and they don't have to do the same process. So, I want to make note of that. I also feel that I need to point out that this morning on The Independent, and it's not a scientific poll, they've already put out a poll stating, do you, I wrote it down, do you support a town, I can't remember what it says now, do you support a transfer of the, a flat donation from the South Kingstown town to the chamber? Some wording of that. And overwhelmingly, it's 90% against a transfer to 5% for. So, I caution that I, I don't see public support for the transfer, I don't see support for the poll, and I don't think that giving them the 7,000 is, is in the best interest of the taxpayer and in the best interest of the town. And I will be surely, moving forward with a petition, if you choose to grant the chamber money.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Steve, could you address the extra hurdle that Ms. Bergner has referenced in, as far as the process that was set up in place of the financial town meeting?
I'm not sure what your question is.
Well, the process that's been set up with the 23 signatures is the first page of the budget process, so, you know, I'm sure it's on the town website, so that the April The April 16th date to submit the signatures, and then the April 30th date where we, thumbs up or thumbs down?
It's April 23rd is the date that the petitions would need to be filed.
Right, and this was a process that was set up...
It's part of the charter.
Right.
It's part of the charter. And the charter provides a entire budget process, and we are in that budget process now. The budget process that was changed from a financial town meeting was a preliminary budget that would be adopted in March, an opportunity for two public hearings to debate or to discuss the contents of the budget that was preliminarily adopted, and to provide a mechanism for the public if they wanted the council to deal with a specific question in advance of the final budget being adopted. The process also then provided the public with an opportunity for referendum, on an all-day referendum, if in fact, they were aggrieved by the budget adopted by the council, and in fact, wished to have a full-day referendum to reduce or add in excess of $250,000, based on a question that would come in with a certain number of signatures. And that, that's all part of the charter at this point, for the adoption of the municipal budget program.
All right, so, as far as referencing it to a hurdle that a taxpayer needs to do versus the chamber, it's part of the process that we have set up that's part of the town charter. I mean, I don't know, you know, how to further explain that. And we're not going to go back and forth with the dialogue, so we'll take your comments, and then we will move on.
Just out of curiosity, and you don't have to answer, but how many signatures would I need to collect for it to have an impact on you? Because 25...
That's what the town charter calls for.
I could easily do 25. But I'm just saying, what would it take to influence decisions that you would come to realize that this community doesn't support the transfer?
That, that's not a question that I care to answer right now. I'm still thinking, and I will have my decision by Monday. But, charter does reference 25 signatures. Thank you. Further questions?
CJ Bergner from Wakefield. I have a few comments as well on the, the chamber issue. At the, when I was here at the January 23rd meeting, the, a representative from the chamber had said that the Northern Rhode Island Chamber, I referenced that the Northern Rhode Island Chamber does pull funds from each of the nine communities that it services. I, that's how I remember it. So, and what I did was, of those nine communities, I contacted each of them just to see whether or not there was any, excuse me, any validity to any, to what they were saying. And I didn't find that to be quite true. Of the, of the nine, two I was not able to get in touch with. The Town of Barerville, I was able to get in touch with, and for the last five years, they've given no money to the, excuse me, to the Northern Rhode Island Chamber. Central Falls, for at least October 2008, they had one notation where they paid for a membership to them, to their chamber, to that Northern Rhode Island Chamber, but they have not given any money for at least the last, since 2008. Town of Cumberland gives $800 a year. The Town of Gloucester, they wouldn't give me a verbal, because their information will be available on their town's website tomorrow morning at 10:00. Town of Lincoln has not given any money to the Northern Rhode Island Chamber either last year or this year. North Smithfield, for the last two years, they've given $1,530, and that will continue on. It'll be this around, if not the same amount, around the same amount carries forward. The Town of Pawtucket, they last paid $1,750, October 2011, and they said that that line item was going to be about the same for Pawtucket. Town of Smithfield gives 1,500, and, excuse me, like I said earlier, the Town of Wunsoket hasn't gotten back to me yet. So, going back to what Mrs. Eddy had said about the chamber really being a wider umbrella now, they're not just a South Kingstown chamber, they're the Southern Rhode Island Chamber. I suggest that they petition each of the towns that they say they cover, there's eight or so listed on their website that they say they service. I think they just as easily could petition each of those towns for funds. I think $7,000 just from us is, is not prudent without further looking into any of their financials, or, and as Mr. Johnson said here himself tonight, he gave you a 990 form, and he didn't even realize it was dated 2010. So, that was the first thing. The second thing was, is that we know that of at least one of their 990 forms where they filed incorrectly as a 501(c)(3). So, personally, I don't hold any stock in any of his numbers he was throwing around, or what their financials are, or how much money they made or didn't make. That being said... Excuse me. I don't believe that you guys should put forth the vote, or vote for the amount of $7,000. I don't think it's right. And given the fact that a bunch of ethical questions had been raised surrounding the vote on, back on the 23rd, I really just don't think that you should give them any money this year at all. And since their financials don't seem to be really up to par, what I suggest they do is in the next year, get their stuff together and come to you and show you what their monies are. That way, excuse me, when you have that information in front of you, whoever the council is next year, has that information in front of them, can have concrete numbers in front of them and decide on a number that's more fitting than $7,000. Just because $7,000 is what they've gotten since 1990 or so, doesn't mean that they should get that from here on out. That's my, my personal feeling. So, I appreciate your comments. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Any further comments from interested citizens?
It's still perplexing to me that people don't see the value of the chamber. That said, I want to apologize, all right? Okay, I want to apologize for disrupting the meeting. I was sitting there, I had just, I had made my comments. This person that spoke after me, I think, made some inappropriate comments up here and got called out on it. And he came over very close to me. This is someone that I do not interact with whatsoever. I choose not to, I prefer not to. Felt very close, I felt threatened. Call me crazy, but when somebody comes at me with anger and menace in his eyes, I feel threatened. So, I felt, I felt that I needed to do something to protect myself. But I do apologize for disrupting your meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments from the public? I want to send a heartfelt thank you to all of the 12 human service agencies that were here tonight. They give back to our most needy population, and the work that they do is absolutely remarkable, and so much appreciated. I'm going to also reiterate the generosity of the community, and if there's anyone out there listening, that contributions can still be made. This is the type of community that we have to any of the agencies. I want to thank the town staff, Chief and Jackie, Animal Control, Communications, Harbor Patrol, EMS, and all of the town staff, Steve and Alan. And I just want to take a moment and speak about the behavior that I saw in this town chambers today. When somebody comes to the microphone and speaks, I don't feel that if somebody disagrees, that they should be approached if there's any disagreement or any comments. I think that the comments here should be focused at the town council. I'm not happy with some of the comments to our town manager tonight, and I'm hoping that some of this foolishness stops. This is not what the Town of South Kingstown deserves, they deserve better. And I'm hoping that all of, all of us step up to the plate and put this behind us and move forward. I'm disgusted with the behavior that I saw tonight in the town chambers. I also would like the decorum at this table, and Steve, I'm officially requesting that we do put something on the agenda to talk about the decorum and probably set some ground rules, because I think it's gotten to the point, and I think that it's to the point where we really need to look at the code of conduct. With that said, are we ready to adjourn?
Yes.
Is there a motion? We don't really need a motion. 10 o'clock, meeting adjourned. Thank you.